Not about bringing.
They were very disappointed when I told them I was gonna get to see you this morning and they couldn't come, but.
Next time. You know, Marissa works at a biotech company. That's my oldest daughter and a number of them bring nine. Let me just send Janet a quick text. I'm assuming she knows, but let me just.
She's dropping off a kid.
Oh, is she? Okay. There we go.
There she is.
All right. Hi Janet. Okay, so it is 9:00 AM and welcome everyone. So this is actually an open session. We could get some attendees joining us, but it looks like at this point it's just the nine of us. So, welcome, everybody. And roll call, please.
Trusty Wells.
Here.
Trusty Lawson.
Here.
Trusty Marcus.
Here.
Vice President D S Locum.
Here.
President Bakable.
Present. All right. So I already did the welcome and any changes to the agenda? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second.
All right, Marianne and Mike, roll call, please.
Trusty Wells.
Hi.
Trusty Lawson.
Hi.
Trusty Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President D S Locum.
Hi.
President Bakable.
Hi. And as a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. So. Okay, and I don't think I just looked. Well, there's nobody here and oh, no, no, actually, look, we we have another. Oh, good. Is Leslie here? Is that what you just said?
It's Leslie Stafford, yeah.
Oh, great. Welcome, Leslie. All right. Let's see. So I didn't see any comment. Yeah, there's still no comments. Okay. So no oral communications. So we'll move right into our discussion items.
All right, perfect. So this this morning, we have several discussion items, but you know how we have our new vision, we have a new mission. And so the goals that we have are relatively goals that we've had for many, many years. And so in talking with Liz, Liz believes that it would be appropriate to have our LCAP goals be the goals that we're all working towards because those LCAP goals are the goals that the principals work with in order to create their SIPs, which will be coming before you, I think, and sometime in September. So at this point in time, I'm gonna have Liz explain and take us through what that will look like. And so Liz, I believe you have the one, your presentation is that one slide that you wanted to share. All right.
Yes, yes. And actually, you know me, so I've turned into a few more slides.
I know, I. Okay.
Very enough. So, so I put the the link in the chat, but I can also share my screen. So would you like to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can no longer see the Zoom. So can can you see the?
It's fine.
Okay. So, as you know, we went through a pretty robust stakeholder engagement process last year to develop these goals. And so I think it's not only the fact that they're LCAP goals, but these are also goals that have been vetted and discussed pretty thoroughly by the community, by board members who are on that committee, by principals, teachers, classified staff who all participated in the LCAP meetings from March through June of last year. And so what we ended up doing is we looked at quite a bit of data at each of the meetings and then determined that these would be appropriate goals for us to work towards over the next three years. These aren't one-year goals. These are by the end of June 2024. And so the goals that we established have to do with our structure and how we provide our tiered supports in academics, behavior, and social emotional work with our students in an MTSS structure. And that's goal one. Goal two is about our English learners. And then goal three is about our reading and our math progress. And so for each one of these goals, there is a set of metrics. And so what I wanted to do was talk a little bit about the goals, but then also talk about how we are measuring our progress towards these goals. Some of the measurements are required by the LCAP, but they're also good measurements, but we've also added to that in terms of some of our local assessments as well. So if we take a look at goal one, and so the link in here is to the larger piece of information about the metrics. And so I'll go to that link in just a second because there's more than what's on this picture. So as I said, goal one is about the full implementation over the next three years of the MTSS structure that provides all the supports that students need in order to thrive academically in their behavior and socially, social emotionally. So there are many, many actions in our LCAP that deal with that, but we're not particularly talking about that right now. But we are developing our plan of implementation of this work that got started a couple of years ago, kind of came to a little bit of a halt during the pandemic, but we're really looking forward to getting this started again. And so that is the goal. And I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that goal, if you would like me just to jump into the metrics to show you how we're going to be measuring our progress towards this goal and then have a conversation about it.
So if you could, Liz, that would be great. As you pointed out, we did start prior to COVID. It was like the year prior to COVID. And then we started going in the direction of really honing in on MTSS, but then COVID came about and we kind of paused. So and then Liz joined us and she knew that we had paused, but still at the same time was working closely with the principals, closely with members of the LCAP team. And we are going back to make certain that we are following MTSS. With that, Liz, you've been working with the County Office of Ed to move forward and bring this back. And I know you've been working, we started working with the principals. We had a principals meeting yesterday that went on for quite a while. And so I think they're really exhausted by the time we have finished our meeting. But they do understand the direction in which we're going. So this would be a good time to talk a bit about it, Liz, and then also talk about the metrics.
Sure. Talk about the plan for the implementation, you mean, John?
Right.
So so what we're doing right now is still gathering baseline information to find out where we are in terms of our implementation. And so last spring, we had two of our County Office SLPA coordinators begin this work in doing some empathy interviews across the district in terms of the initiatives, what's been taking place, kind of where we left off, what are people's understanding of MTSS. And so we have some baseline data there. And so now we're restarting that again and our our county office support people as well will be working with each of the school sites to determine again, kind of the baseline for what is happening for tier one instruction, for tier one social and emotional supports and the PBIS, which is kind of our tier one in looking at the behavior. And so we're gathering that information because we know that not everybody is doing exactly the same thing. And so they'll be supporting us with that during the month of September. And then we'll bring all of that data together to take a look at what are our next steps? Where are there holes? Where are their strengths? Where are their commonalities that already exists? And then we'll be bringing together our, an MTSS leadership team for the district that helps really begin to further this implementation. Let me show you the metrics here. So again, many of these are just foundational pieces that are required by the LCAP. And so some the SARC and in terms of properly credential teachers, access to materials, facilities and good repair, want to make sure that that's in place. The local indicators in terms of our implementation of, you know, the parent involvement, parent engagement, standards-based materials, those that those pieces of information that I shared with you last spring. Those also are part of the measurement of the MTSS. But then moving into to more specifics, we administer the California Healthy Kids Assessment. And that is information. And this is something that we know that we can do a stronger job of this year, but that is information that gives us the student perspective in terms of school climate and pupil engagement. And so this is some of the baseline information that we got from the implementation of California Healthy Kids last spring in terms of the questions that were asked. And again, I think knowing now that this is going to be one of our metrics, we can take a look at the questions and we can select the questions that we want to highlight and to measure. But last spring, in terms of school climate, eighty-two percent of the students said that they felt safe in school. And again, this was just a little weird last year because some of the students who took this weren't even in school, right? So I think we'll have a better sense of that this year when they when they take the assessment in the spring. And then in another area that we took a look at was the safety of the environment in terms of bullying was a question that we chose to to be one of our baseline questions. And ninety percent of them felt that they were safe from bullying. And then we had this school connectedness where the question was, I feel close to the people in the school and seventy-six percent of the children agreed with that. And again, this is given at grades five and seven. And so we set metrics for where we would like to see that response increase over the next three years. But again, we can add more to this metric. We can revise this metric and be more selective of the questions. Pupil engagement in terms of motivation, truancy and absenteeism. We got some information about that as well. And then the chronic absenteeism rate was also kind of weird last year because many students weren't in school. As well as we want to break that down by student groups. And so what you have here is two pieces of information for our baseline data is what what the number was for last year and then what the number was for the last full year that students were actually in person. And so you can see that last year, we had a very high rate of chronic absenteeism of seventeen point five percent. Whereas when the students were actually in school for the full year, which was twenty eighteen nineteen, our overall chronic absenteeism rate was nine point two percent. So you can see for our English learners, foster youth, we want to disaggregate for socioeconomically disadvantaged because that's a low income group that is highlighted by the LCAP. But in the past, that rate has been connected to the EL group. And so we want to disaggregate that moving forward. And now we've got more data people can help with that. And then we have our students with disabilities. So you'll see that the rate was very high last year and that was counted by students who weren't showing up in their virtual classrooms. So we'll we'll relook at that this year with students in person. But we also didn't do a strong enough job last year of reaching out to the students who are not being connected or for a lot of this had to do with connectivity issues, but some of it also had to do with student choice and not showing up for class. And so chronic absenteeism is when students are absent more than ten percent of the school year. So then our attendance rate was a little bit different than that, right? So these are the students who just just basically counting their attendance. So you can see what the rate was for last year. And then we just counted last year and then compared it once again to the last full year when students were actually in person. And then we did the same thing with the suspension rate. And the expulsion rate. So those are measures of our MTSS implementation. We saved most of the academic measures for the upcoming goals because they are in alignment with our emphasis on language arts and math and on our EL proficiency. And so we didn't want to put them in twice, but they they will see them when we take a look at the next two goals. But we did add the California Science Test in here because we have very low rates in science. The last time it was given in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, in terms of the students who met or exceeded. And that is only given in grades five and eight. And so again, we've set a goal of fifty percent for the next three years. And again, these these can all be changed as we have this conversation. If you feel that any of these rates should should be increased. So that's goal one. So do we want to talk a little bit more about either the goal itself or the metrics that have been selected or the the goal for the metrics for three years from now?
Maybe what we could do is see if there's any clarifying questions. And I know for me, it would be helpful, I think, just to go through all of them collectively and think about it. Is that okay with the rest of the board?
I just had one question. I can't remember which which student groups get the Healthy Kids survey. Is it all of them or?
Grades, grades five and seven, everybody in grade five and seven.
Okay.
And then I do have a question, clarifying question, Liz. You, did you say you did, you guys did not do a good job with the absenteeism? And I again, as a clarifying question, the reason why I'm saying this is just want to make sure I understood you guys were doing a good job because you guys had all the office assistants and people at the school sites calling those kids. So again, just for that clarification purpose.
Yeah. So so I think that's where you see the attendance rate as being pretty high last year because they were calling. But the chronic absenteeism rate where students were missing more than ten percent of the time, I don't know that we determined what it was that was making that happen. So I probably should have said stated that a little bit differently because we did do a good job in calling kids and trying to find out if you needed connectivity. And so the absentee, the attendance rate was stronger than the chronic absenteeism rate. And so this would take going into seeing who were these students and making more of a one-on-one connection with them and their families and seeing what needed to happen to reengage those students.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah. And we did that. And so starting in the middle of the year, we had our familia su nidas were given lists of students who were showing problems in terms of some chronic absenteeism trends or had already kind of met that benchmark and they called every single family and brought parents into to meetings. And so much of this may have just been a reflection of students who are met the chronic absenteeism rate at the beginning of the year because then there was outreach that happened later in the year. Okay, so going back to LCAP goals, number two is our English learner goal. Can you and can you see the, have I done that successfully? You can see the goal because I've been going back and forth between two. Okay, so we have a real emphasis as we have always had. But we wanted to pull it out in a its own particular goal and emphasis on the success of English learners. And so we have a goal around English learners progressing by a minimum of one level on the LPAC each school year with every student meeting, every EL student meeting, the criteria for reclassification within five years of enrollment in the Redwood City School District. We still have many children who start with us in kindergarten, many EL students who have not reclassified by the time they leave us in eighth grade. And we know that their trajectory as they move into the high school, if they have not been reclassified often doesn't set them on the A to G pathway in order to be a successful graduate. And so we're working with the high school district around that. But we also don't know why students within eight years of being in our school district haven't reclassified as English learners to be RFP. So we have set aside a goal and specific actions to to try to do a better job of this. And so our metrics in terms of monitoring this, it's the same metric sheet, only down on on goal two is of course, the LPAC results and the LPAC, the summative LPAC. We were not able to complete last spring. It was very difficult with all so many of the students being in remote learning. But we tested as many students as we could all the way through summer school. Students were still being tested, but it was not, it was not finalized. And then the the prior year, eleven point seven percent of the students were reclassified as proficient. However, not all students were tested. Once again, because that was the year that many students got sent home and not all had devices to be tested remotely. And in the last full year that we were in person in twenty eighteen nineteen thirteen point six of the students scored proficient on the LPAC. The EL Progress Indicator, which is on the California dashboard, is expected to be one of our metrics. The last time that was listed was in twenty nineteen. There wasn't a dashboard in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, and we'll see if there's one in the spring of twenty twenty-two. But if there is, then we'll be expected to have made progress on the EL Progress Indicator. And what that is, is a measure. It's a combination of measurements of students who are reclassified and students who are making progress on the LPAC. And they calculate that at the state level. And so the last time that that was calculated in twenty nineteen, fifty-one percent of our students made sufficient progress. Our EL reclassification count is there. And then our EL reclassification rate is there. And again, our our count, some of it depends on how many students we were able to test. And again, in person, we we plan to to continue to reach all students and to be able to test them with the LPAC. And then with our increased and improved services and focus on ELD instruction and the training of teachers who are providing that, we expect to also improve our reclassification rate.
Liz, can I ask you a question on that? I what year did we start giving the LPAC? Was it the twenty nineteen twenty was the first time? Because I know when Linda Montez was here, we were giving a different test.
The CELT.
Yeah. And I know that the LPAC is a more difficult one. Is that why the numbers are so different between eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty?
So I would, I don't know exactly when the LPAC began. I don't know, John, do you?
It began in nineteen twenty.
So that explains why the numbers are so different, I think.
So that and is very possible to that because it was a more difficult test, but I think that setting up the structure to give the test, I think, may have also, and again, I wasn't here, so I don't know, but in other places, I know it was a little bit more challenging because of the listening, speaking and the reading and the writing components that just the whole administration of the test. Not only was it harder, but the administration of it was a little bit more challenging as well. And so there may not have been enough testers to be able to to do all the different components. In the past, more of it was able to be administered by the classroom teacher than it is at this time.
And so at this time, what we do have are the testers that are, that we do have testers that we hired to help us to move forward, correct, Liz?
Well, so it's been a challenge. So Jenny and Roberto are out there testing, right? And so our management are testing students with the LPAC. We haven't been able to find in the past, we've hired retired teachers to do LPAC testing and many of them don't want to come back and test in person. So and that's what happened at the end of the year last year as well as why we didn't finish testing everybody's, we couldn't find people who would actually do the testing. And when we were able to train the testers to do remote testing, many of these retired teachers had some challenges with that because they weren't as proficient in using the computers, but then neither were the little kindergartners who they're trying to test remotely. So they would fall off the call and, you know, so it just wasn't ideal when you're not able to give it in person.
Thank you.
I have a question. So in the past, we had a large number of students that would go on to high school that were not reclassified. So is there a specific metric or intervention that we're doing for the middle schoolers to make sure that by eighth grade they are reclassified? Because as you said, once they get to high school, they're way behind. And I would like to avoid that if we can.
I we completely agree with you, Maria, which is why we have this goal. And so in the LCAP, we have listed some of the the different interventions. And we know that this needs to be a big focus for us. So right now at the middle school, the they receive English Language Development Instruction, but we know that the remedy for this begins way before middle school. And so that the the strength of the program needs to begin from the moment they start schooling, because many of these are students who have been here since kindergarten. Right? And so we need to be looking at that, their whole trajectory of the the programs that they receive in terms of English Language Development, but also the training for the teachers so that they're feeling comfortable. The what the way the schedule is set up, the materials that are being used with Leslie here, she, Leslie Daniele, who's our EL director, she's been working with Nifa Zuna, who is our newcomer Tosa, to really look at the the materials and provide new materials for the newcomers to have. And so they've just purchased those materials and they're training the teachers and the instructional assistants on how to use that. And Leslie is also going to be offering some classes on how to use our our data tool elevation for so that teachers can also be monitoring the progress of their English learners. And then we'll be looking at what needs to happen within the school day that's stronger in terms of support for kind of academic support for just the the courses that they're taking, but ensuring that the students are taking are receiving ELD that's designed to be at their level that will help, you know, ensure that they're getting the language instruction that they need also.
So one comment for me, I I know that when people do help with the LPAC testing, they're not allowed to tell the students to elaborate on their answers. And I find that as an English learner myself, that that could be intimidating. At the end of the day, it's best of you, before you start the test, you make that student feel very comfortable, letting them know. You know, tell me as much as you can because this test is going to because a lot of the times I don't even know if the students know that that test is going to help them be reclassified. Do they actually understand what that means, right? So if you're giving them a test, they're nervous. English is their second language. They're feeling intimidated. So you may just ask them a question and their response may be yes or no. And you can't say that they know English because they didn't elaborate because you're not allowed to tell them. So I feel that when we talk about student voice, it would be good to encourage the students and somehow I don't know if this needs to be more, you know, at the I don't even know the state level, right? So the people that are actually taking this test. Actually, I don't even know how to explain myself. The people that are actually giving the test make the student feel comfortable and the people that are making the test allow our districts to disclose some information. You're actually not giving them the answers. You just want to make them feel comfortable so that they can actually speak up. And in fact, maybe they do know how to speak English, but they're so nervous. We don't allow them to do that. Do I explain myself?
Yeah, no, completely. And so we're, yeah, we're not allowed to encourage them, right? Because what they're trying to do is really standardize how this test is is given. So the testers go through, you know, several days of training and calibration so that they're all giving it the same way. But that does end up inhibiting anybody from saying, tell me more, right? Yeah. So no, I I agree with you. And I maybe it's something that as we talked to the to Jenny and Roberto, as they did the training for the testers, you know, we can think about are there ways that things that might be able to be said prior to beginning the test? Maybe by the classroom teacher, for example, who says, you know, make sure that you say everything that you can think of and the tester will pause and keep talking as long as you can, you know, so that the kids are given, this is part of the problem, I think, with the the classroom teacher not being able to give the test. Right? Is that they don't, they're being given the test by someone who they don't know. And right now they're testing at Hoover and these little kindergarten kids are going into a room and sitting there with their headphones on, talking to somebody on a computer. It's not conducive to chat, right? It's, you know. I agree with you. I agree with you.
What about the the children that have special needs that are English language learners as well? Because it's, you know, if you have anxiety, as Cecilia just said, or something that's not as noticeable per se, then they have an extra hard time.
Yeah. Yes. And so for students who have significant learning needs, there is an alternative assessment to take. But for a student whose anxiety or, you know, doesn't have significant learning needs, takes the takes the regular LPAC and could takes the regular LPAC and could be very nervous having to go sit in a little room with little earphones on and, you know, with a stranger. No, I agree, it's, it's not an ideal situation. So I, you know, I, I, I think we can talk to the teacher. And, you know, here's the first week of school too, right? So I think we can send out something to the teacher saying, please, as these students are being taken from your room, please make sure that you've tried to make them feel as comfortable as possible. And I know the, the people who are administering the exam online are retired teachers, many of them. You know, there's, there's four of them who are, who are helping us out with this, you know, many, many years of experience and they're bilingual, right? And so, you know, I'm, I'm sure they're doing the best they can to look at them fondly. But it's, it's not the same. I, I agree. It's not ideal. It's not the same as in person, no. Okay, so I'll go on to goal three. Which is our reading and language arts goal. And so what we've said is that each Revit City student will make at least one year's growth in language arts and math for each year of enrollment in Revit City. And that students currently scoring more than one year below grade level in language arts and math will be accelerated so that they'll catch up. Right? That we can't just continue to see the, the gap widen. And so to measure that, we've got CAST, which is again, a required metric. And so these were our last scores in reading and math disaggregated by E L R F E P. Low income, which is SED, and then students with disabilities, those were our scores. And then we've set targets for three years from now. And then we're also, of course, going to be using our iReady that at our year end, iReady scores that are available in reading and math. And that was, these are our spring scores. And then those are our goals for three years from now.
So Liz, when you're talking about one year's growth, we're talking one year's growth from where the student is at that point in time, correct?
Right.
I'm a student that's in the second, same in the fourth grade. And the last, with the last, I'm at fourth grade, but I'm reading at a second grade level. Our expectation is that you'll make it at least to the third grade level, hopefully even more so.
Yeah, our expectation is a year and a half.
Okay, a year and a half.
Yeah.
Okay.
Start to catch up. And then the following year will be another year and a half.
Correct. All right, all right, I got it now. There any questions? And each of our schools do have the reading specialist, I'm, I'm talking the reading specialist for those schools who have kindergarten through fifth grade. Because I know the middle school, we, we have not been able to get them at the middle school. But K one and two, each of these schools do have a reading specialist, is that correct?
Yeah.
I know we still, Wendy's going to talk about the vacancies and all that when, when she comes in. But I just wanted to get that clarification.
Yes. And so there are reading special, there's at least one reading specialist at each school site. Some schools have already had one, and so we have one. And what our plan to do with the reading specialists is a number of things. And so we'll be bringing them together each month so that they share their practices. We've got some very seasoned and experienced reading teachers, reading specialists. We have a couple of newer ones, and, but we want to bring them all together to look at data, to see how the students are doing at their school sites, particularly the ones who are behind. So that we will monitor their progress and then talk about strategies. We don't want the classroom teachers to only think of the reading specialists as the people who can provide the support needed by students in order to accelerate their reading. Classroom teachers also need to be coached and prepared to do small group reading instruction and have the skills so that they can also identify the student needs in reading and help provide some of that additional support in small group. And so part of the reading specialist job descriptions, and not only are they working with small groups of children, but they're also coaching teachers. So we're going to be working with them to help them not only provide small group instruction, because there's no way that they can provide small group instruction to all the students who will probably need support. But that they're working with the teachers and helping them develop their skills in this area. We're also looking at additional materials that may be needed. We have a partnership with two different outside agencies with Pivot Learning, as well as with Stanford, who are helping us with kind of an improvement process in terms of where Stanford is looking at support of students who are multilingual students in small groups. And so we'll be getting some information and support and training from them. And then Pivot is working with, along with Carnegie, improvement practices at a couple of our schools to also focus on reading and to look at what, what are strategies that are, can be developed that really address learning loss. And so those learnings will also be brought back to our reading specialist group and can be more widely disseminated across the schools if we're finding that they're actually, you know, producing the results that we want to see in accelerating student learning. So we have a lot going on in this area. We also are going to do a book club. Two of our staff development coaches are, found a great book in terms of differentiating instruction within small groups. And they, in the professional development, they did back two weeks ago when teachers were returning. They talked about that, and there was a lot of interest on the part of the, of many teachers to join that book club and learn some of these strategies. So that will be taking place as well. That's going to begin in a couple of weeks, and teachers will get a stipend and the book. And then they'll go and they'll try things and they'll come back and they'll, and they'll share, right? So that whole idea of a professional learning community around reading, we're going to have a number of things going on that really addresses, you know, stronger reading instruction in in small groups at all grade levels.
Great, great. And I know we have some really strong reading specialists in the district, one being Siggy. Has done an outstanding job. And I know she is going to also do some of the leadership pieces of helping our other teachers that need some of their support.
Right. And she's also going to be, she and Cecile Pike, who retired last year, are maybe helping with a tutoring program that we're going to get started also probably in September, where we're bringing back retired teachers to do some additional tutoring. We have to kind of wait until we figure out what's happening in terms of people on campus. But that's something that we also are starting to prepare.
So I am really pleased that we do have those reading specialists, because I do feel that it would help and benefit all, all of our students, especially those that need it most. And then one of the things, it would just be more of a suggestion that when teachers are announcing that they're having their book clubs, perhaps maybe if they can reach out, if they, I'm not sure if they're planning on this already, but if they can reach out to the parents of those kids that perhaps need it most to encourage them and tell them that, you know, this would be a fun activity. That way it gets them a little bit more encouraged and motivated to join the club versus the kids are already struggling with the reading, may not even want to join the book club because they don't find it, you know, find it entertaining. So again, it's just a suggestion. And it might be that you guys already thought about that, too.
No, but thank, but so I think I didn't, I wasn't, so the book club is for the teachers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the teachers join the book club. But I know that particularly in the upper grades, they do, they do have book clubs. And so that's something that absolutely, if they can, are going to continue that practice this year, which we're going to help support them do that, that they reach out to the families to encourage the reluctant participants to participate. And, and the book clubs usually for the kids are, are books of choice, right? So sometimes that helps too, because they can read about whatever it is that they're particularly interested in. But yes.
So, um, thank you, Liz. That was, that was really good for us to, I think, all hear that and think about it. Because of course, when we're looking at the whole LCAP, some of that gets a little buried. So that was helpful. Um, so the question I have strategically, and it's for the board and I guess for, for John, is in terms of, you know, traditionally, we've had kind of our vision, mission, maybe values, and then board goals. So, and the board goals, you know, I was just pulling them up, have been broader than these kind of very metric focused goals, right? So we've had goals that are, I was just, is this where it is? No. You know, like recruit and maintain stuff. I had it up, and now I can't find it. Let me just pull it up. So, so I'll, I'll, I'll talk while I'm pulling it up. So my question is, part of it is just how we kind of display the information, because right now, when you pull up board docs to go to a meeting, you see those goals. So are these the goals we want people to see? They actually don't even really see the vision, mission, values as easily as they see these goals. I think these are going to be a little too technical for the general public to appreciate or even, you know, value. So I'm fine with, you know, replacing the LCAP goals. Re- replacing our traditional board goals with the LCAP goals, because I think our vision and mission now is pretty good, and it, it has kind of that bigger picture, you know, vision. But I just, in terms of how we talk about it to the public, you know, the, the goals that we had before were around, you know, the, making sure that the bond came in on budget and on time, that we encouraged preschool and after school program, that sort of thing, right? So I don't know, John and Liz, were you guys thinking that we would just replace those goals entirely and not have them and just focus on these more technical kinds of, you know, academic goals?
I think my recommendation would be kind of a combination of both.
Okay.
These are the technical goals that go with the different items. When, for example, where, when we are discussing, you know, improvement in reading, or we're discussing a, a topic where Liz is bringing you something in regard to language arts or mathematics, I would want, I would hope that the goal number three would be that, that goal that's there on that memo, so that public understands that. And then the other ones that we have about recruiting, about the bond, we still need to keep those on there. And you also have to understand that we have this whole equity piece too, that each department laid out what they were going to do in regard to the mission that talks about equity, the vision that also talks about equity. So I believe that these are the technical goals that we need to put into place for a lot of our board discussions on those memos. But then there are the other ones that could, that could be our values, like the recruitment piece. The piece about, we want to be on time and in budget with the, with the construction that's happening. So what I can do is look at those, and it depends on what the, what item is being discussed at the board meeting, whether it comes to a to the goals that you see before you, or to the ones that are listed that we will still utilize. But I agree with Liz that our thrust in the school district should be aligned with what we're doing with the LCAP. Because when you see the schools coming to you to get their SIPs approved, their SIPs are aligned with these three goals that are here. And for the majority of the time, when we are presenting or giving input at a board meeting and you see the memo, I would hope that the majority of our time is spent on these goals.
Well, I think we could do both, John. Because I was thinking, what I had thought about was like, I think currently it says, like, reduce the number of long-term English learners. And under that, we have the goal that Liz just presented to us. So one is, if we could, like, combine them, because I don't know if the public may understand it all, or it's too long, or.
If we combine, it's too long. If we combine them, it will be too long with the LCAP goal, which i- i- if you're saying to combine them, it is going to become lengthy.
Right. Can we have like a bullet under that maybe? Or how did you envision it? Because I think we have them. We just don't have the metrics. We don't have the detail on some of them. And I agree that we need to align them all.
Okay, let me try. I, I can't get on my computer because the screen is entire.
Yeah, so I, I did, I did put the board goals in the chat that, that are currently the ones that we have. I mean, I, I think part of it too is if you think about it, the board has certainly these academic goals. I mean, at the end of the day, that's what we're here for, right? But we also have goals around like managing the, the bond construction, right? Or expanding and strengthening partnerships. Or safety, recognizing, and, you know, some of that is sort of addressed in our vision and mission and core values. And some of it, not everything has to be up there either. But it, but it feels like if, if we, yeah. I mean, the other thing to do is just to say, you, you know, these are LCAP goals, which are a specific, well, I guess what you're saying is you'd like them to be our focus goals. Yeah.
Really be focusing our education. If not, then we're not in the business of education.
Well, except for the are specifically designed for the LCAP money, which is for the supplemental concentration, or is it really meant to be broader? I mean, it's kind of both, but you know what I mean? Because the LCAP is really specifically designed, like, how are you spending the money on supplemental concentration?
But I think it's also addresses what we need to do in order to move the students forward. So that is, as John said, one of our main goals. And in the past, we addressed it in different ways, like, you know, kids will make at least five percent growth or something. I think this is a little bit more specific, which I like. And I like the way that it has the metrics. So it's just not a lofty goal is a measurable one. And in the courses at CSBA, they always told us, at least when I took them, that if you measure it, it will get done. So I just.
Can I ask, I I, I feel like, so our role as a board is a much higher level. And so our board goals are kind of broader, because those are our goals as a board. They're not the district office goals. They're not the school's goals. And I feel like the LCAP goals are kind of the ARs to the board policy. So we have our, our goals. And the LCAP goals are how the district is going to reach the board goals. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Trying to say. Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. I think like what I was saying, that, you know, we're going to ensure that students read it, you know, make so much progress. And then underneath, underneath that would be how we're going to do that. But I think we can't lose sight of the metrics and how it's going to get done. So I agree with you.
So right now, it's the goals that, that, and I was able to pull up the, the the website, ensure all students are reading at or above grade level by the end of second grade. Well, that, that's part of what the LCAP is about. Support all students in meeting and excelling district benchmarks. That's part of the LCAP also, because we're, we're taking these dipsticks, these times in, during the school year where we're, we're assessing students. Reduce the number of long-term English learners. That's part of the LCAP goal. Recognize, retain and recruit high-quality staff. We can always keep that in there because we're always looking, but now there's a whole equity piece that goes with that. Expand and strengthen partnerships to increase access to preschool before and after school summer programs. That's a standalone. It really doesn't. We can keep it, that's fine. We were constantly doing that. And the big piece here, the next one is to manage the bond construction projects on time and on budget. Those can, you know, we can definitely leave the one of managing the bond construction. And if you want to keep the expand and strengthen partnerships to increase access to preschool before and after school, we continue with those partnerships. And the, and the recognize, retain and recruit high-quality staff, which should remain. But the first three, I think they're part of the LCAP goals that we have at this point in time that were just presented to you.
I don't think that we're disagreeing with you. I think that we actually agree. I think that the issue that from, you know, you guys can chime in, but from what I heard is that those are our goals. But I think that what the LCAP, um, description does, it tells more of how it will be measured, how it will be done, not just the goal itself. So that's why I was saying we have to merge those two together somehow, because those are our academic goals.
So actually in one of the, um, courses for the masters in governance, they do say that the board's responsibility is fiscal stability and student achievement. So definitely with the LCAP, we are getting, you know, the student achievement piece, the fiscal stability, um, would come in, you know, again with construction and bond related projects. I do also think though, that although we do have it as a goal, um, we may, um, it's almost like it's a done deal. We know it's happening, right? Do we have to list it as a goal? You know, I don't know. That's something that we can think about, but I do definitely think that we are on the same page and then maybe do align our goals. Although again, the three goals that are the board goals do match to the LCAP goals. So, um, think about how we want to, like John said, do we want to keep the retain and recruit high quality staff? We already do that. So do we want to continue to keep that as a goal? Or do we want to just stick to the LCAP and add, um, the financial, fiscal stability?
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, the thing for me is, you know, as a board member, I'm not going to get into the details of how staff implements the LCAP goals, right? That's not our job. And so my job would be, I mean, how I see our, the board's job is to basically support staff in doing that, right? Um, and then, you know, I think recognize, retain and recruit high quality staff. That's one of the most important things we do. Of course, we do that through the superintendent because that's the one person we hire, but we actually do it through all the various policies and budgets that we put together and everything else. And I mean, basically we're, I feel like we're as good as our staff, you know, in the sense, because really it's, it's such a people driven program and we have invested a lot in professional development and hiring the right people and you know what I mean? So, a- and then I do think, you know, Cecilia, that's a good point. You know, we don't, other than the bond construction project, we don't really have anything about finances. I mean, one of the things that's always been one of our goals as a board is to ensure that we are financially stable and we have done that. You know, I know since Maria's been on the board, since I've been on the board, all of us, we pay close attention to that, right? And we have survived a lot of ups and downs with budgets. So you know, maybe it's just sort of thinking there's a few high level goals that we keep there for us. And then we could just specifically put the LCAP goals in there as written and even have a link to the LCAP for people that are more interested. Cause they're a little bit app, apples and oranges in terms of the level of detail. Not, not so much that, I agree. I think the LCAP goals is basically how we implement ensuring all students are reading, meeting and selling benchmarks and long-term English learners. That, the LCAP goals is how we get there, right? Um, anyway, I'll stop.
Liz, what are you thinking? I like to hear from you because to me, I like the goals, but again, it's like, we need a shorter description. And then underneath that you can put a bullet, a link, something that links the two together.
Sure. So, so I think I'm thinking about what Cecilia said in terms of, um, you know, the major responsibilities, which are academic progress and success and fiscal responsibility. And so maybe, you know, we could, there, there could be just like two overarching categories. And then these are the academic part of it. And then the fiscal part of it has like a couple of goals specific underneath that. I think the thing about a goal is I think if you really want it to be a goal, it does need to be measurable, right? And there, you do need to collect data about how you're doing on that goal. Otherwise it's just kind of a, more of a vision statement. Right? So I think that's something to think about in terms of what you want to do. Cause these are admirable, wonderful things to work towards, but how, how will we know if we've done that? And so.
That's a good point. Yeah, I know you make a good point, Liz.
And we want to align this. We want to align the measurements is what I was going to jump in and say. And so having a goal about second grade level means we're going to, to hear about that goal is a totally different presentation than what we hear about from the LCAP, which is talking about growth on all grade levels and accelerated growth for, you know, a certain population of students. So I, there is alignment here that I think has to happen, but, but clearly, you know, academic success, fiscal responsibility, I think is the two categories of goals that we should be looking at. The other thing too is I think we want to shy some of the, like the expand and strengthen partnerships to increase access to preschool. But to me, that feels more like an activity that would fall underneath a goal as opposed to a goal in and of itself. So I think that we should try and distill down to like, well, wh- what is the thing that we're trying to accomplish? Make that a goal and mesh, and put the measurement in for that. And then, uh, on the LCAP ones, I think we can, the, the goals in the broad and the two focus goals have a lot of details in each of them. And we don't need to pull all those details up into the board goal. I think we can grab the, the, um, the synthesis, you know, synthesize something out of it, summarize something out of it to say, you know, all students are, you know, all students are, um, increasing academically by grade level and students that are behind are accelerated. That might be our goal and I don't know. I'm just wondering if there's a way we can shorten it a little bit for the board goals and then just, yeah, go to the LCAP to skip the more details. And of course, go to the LCAP to get the metrics.
Yeah. And have a link underneath it. Um, the other thing is, um, the equity piece. Do we put that in as part of the description or what? But I agree with Liz that you need to measure it and, and I like what Mike just said. So we need to shorten it and then you can put in a link for those that want to really, the full description. Because I think if we just put it out like that, you might lose people and they're going to say, what? And it could be academic goals, financial or others.
President McAvoy?
Yes, Eliana.
If I can add something in regards to the roles. So Board Docs actually has this really neat feature where if you click on the board goals, it gives you a progress of the, of the goals. So everything that comes to the school board for approval is listed under that specific goal.
So Eliana, from your experience, having been linking then these goals with the actions, if we move to the three LCAP goals exclusively, would that capture everything we're doing within our board con? Well, I guess the bond stuff, it wouldn't.
It would not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's where it gets to. I, I.
No, sorry. It would hit the, it would hit the broad goal because facilities, you know, a hundred percent facilities is an metric in the broad goal for goal number one. Sorry, the, the first goal.
In LCAP?
Bond would totally be in there for the LCAP. I think, I think, I mean, that's how.
Let me go. Sorry. I gotta go back and look.
So I would to, to ask anyone that submits a board agenda item that probably be a little bit more specific about which goal they should mark once you submit their board agenda item.
Yeah. Remember we did that in the past and we were trying to measure it, but it was hard because it, we didn't have the board docs to do it for us. Hi, John.
No, I like pronouns. That's why I'm waiting. So we have the three LCAP goals and then you also have, um, the original goals that are right on, uh, our, our website at this point in time.
Well, and frankly, I mean, I think, you know, we did talk like the first three of those original goals are sort of captured in and, and, and done much better with our three LCAP goals in a way, because it's all students. And then, you know, I do, I mean, I think expand and strengthen partnerships. I think, Mike, you make a good point. There needs to be a means to an end to that, right? And so and I will say, we also have partnerships as one of our, do we call it a value? Yeah, a value. You know, we, we have our mission, vision and our values and we do mention partnerships already in that. Um, although it's, that's more family and community partnerships.
But I think you can also capture that when we do those three goals because, for example, John goes out and gets money from Zuckerberg Foundation to, or was it whatever it is, CCI, to get the, the, um, equipment for the students. There you merge the two. It's the partnership. Or when, um, uh, Stanford talked about giving us the counselor and supporting the, the students again, I think you could capture it, but I don't know. Janet, what do you think? You're looking thoughtful there.
It's that, that one about expanding, I'm going to pull it up real quick. Expand and strengthen partnerships to increase access to preschool before and after school. Are we still trying to expand preschool before and after school? Or are we trying to maintain what we have?
So at this point in time, preschool is pretty well set. That's not to say something coming down from the state may change that in the, in the future to expand it with additional resources, if that ever passes. And, but right now for before and after school, before and after school programs, we're pretty much there. Aren't any additional ones. Um, our summer programs, we continue to, to strive to have some, to strive to have summer school each year. And you know, we will have it for the next two.
We did expand this last summer.
Right.
And I, I, I think there's an and missing in that particular one. I think it's supposed to say expand and strengthen partnerships, increase access school before and after school, comma, and summer program. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just what I was thinking is the goal of expanding all of these, the preschool and before and after school made sense a while ago. But I think now we're not really looking to expand it.
Yeah. And in the past, the preschool had to do with the need that there were not enough spaces, but I think since then there were more that have come online, like the one across the street from the, uh, district office. And for us, I think it was a little harder to do. But I think that preschool was pretty well set from what I remember. I don't know. What do you remember, Alicia?
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, one of the reasons we had this goal, and this goes back years ago that we had this was exactly because we could see our data. It made, we wanted to have more preschool kids in preschool, right? Because they did better in kindergarten and they got there. We did want to increase before and after school and then summer school. So probably we want to continue these things. It's, it's a little bit different, but and, and I think they were out of, they were to support the academics. If you go back to the LCAP goals, they're to support the individuals in the classroom. But I think there was a recognition that we couldn't just do it in one school day. Like you needed the extended day learning. You needed the opportunity for preschool, you needed that summer school learning loss, right? Yeah. So I don't know. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. So maybe needs to change to, uh, continue to support and maintain the, um, before and after hours activities or programs to support our students or something a little different because I agree with Janet, we're not really expanding it anymore.
Right. And, and like I say, preschool may be expanded. That's one of the governor's wishes. The bill, I don't know if it passed or not to start that, but if that were to take place, and it's preschool would be in our budget, in the general fund budget, if that does take place, then that is to expand and be to expand and to strengthen. But it could be changed to, um, to strengthen, um, strengthen, to continue to strengthen preschool before school and after school and summer programs. We could continue, or to continue to maintain because we have maintained these programs and a lot of these programs have been maintained with outside resources for us to do it.
Yeah, I was going to say support and maintain.
Well, something, I mean, just a thought, like, um, to continue a healthy fiscal stability that would allow the district to align, uh, the LCAP goals with board goals. And then you don't have to say what our board goals are because they do match the LCAP.
You know, um, so while we were talking, I was trying to just Google, you know, a few of our neighboring districts to see what they have on their website around goals. And I haven't been too successful. For the most part, most of them have vision and mission and values. But one thing, Eliana, I don't know if, uh, particularly in your conversations with board docs, if you know, you know, which of our neighboring districts are using those? And it might be useful just to look at what do they, what are they measuring their board meetings with, with their goals, right? Cause I mean, there's sort of multiple layers here. There's sort of what, what we want to work towards as a, as a board, right? For our district. What we want to sort of account for to the public through our board meetings as we're sort of going through this. I, I don't know if that's helpful or not. Um.
I think the idea was, um, from what I remember, again, from masters and governance was that you have the helicopter view. That's where the, um, board is up here. And then down underneath came all the other things. So uh, it was hard for board members to figure out, did we meet all these, um, goals that we have and how are we doing it? And that's where they said to have these metrics and you attached it to your board agenda so that every board meeting, you would know which of those goals it was, um, being talked about, measured or doing something about. So I think that's where that comes in, in the, in the ensuring for the board. You don't just rely, real, you know, uh, rely on Liz and John to tell us because you have this other uh, system that tells you, yep, here it is. You brought, you know, so much on the construction. It's almost at 90%. You've achieved it. Basically.
Yeah, I think the measurable, yeah. And you just had this before Maria. So I just wanted to echo it again. The measurability of the goal, I think is really, is really important because otherwise it's a value. We value partnerships for sure. But if we're not sitting there saying, we need 10 partnerships to do these things or, or something like that, it's hard to imagine what that progress bar looks like. Yeah. So then what, what I hear right now is that definitely the LCAP, what Liz presented does hit the goal, the board goals that you see on the website right now, which were ensure all students are reading at or above grade level by the end of second grade. Support all students in meeting and excelling in district benchmarks. Reduce the number of long-term English learners. So those through the, the three goals that we have in the LCAP address those. Correct?
So it didn't for me. Um, I don't know about everybody else, only because the measurement is different, uh, at least for the second grade reading, um, that, that seemed misaligned. So that, that was, that was the other thing. And then the, the other one on the district benchmarks. If you mean, if that benchmark covers, I don't know which benchmark it's covering, but if it's covering the growth, um, academic growth benchmark, then that's fine. Um, if that's what we're talking about, but but definitely having the different measure for that first one felt misaligned to me. Um.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I was saying that we needed to revise it or tweak it a little bit so that each one of these, uh, three goals can then be uh, covered. And again, I think the benchmarks have changed since we have these goals. So I don't know how to do that, but that's what I'm thinking.
All right. I need, I need to move us forward or else we're not going to get through this, this, we're not going to get things done. So my recommendation is I would like two of you to work with myself and Liz and we'll, we'll hammer this out. I, I appreciate that we're all together, but I know what happens when we're all together. We end up not completing our task. And so I, I really need to complete our task today because we have a lot to get to before two o'clock.
Mike, would you be willing to volunteer? You're, you've got a different set of, uh, eyes because you haven't been immersed here. So.
I, I would love to volunteer. I would love to. I, I would love to volunteer. I would love to volunteer.
Okay. So Mike, who else? I need one more.
Aren't we happy to join?
Okay. Cecilia. So I tell you, the first task will be for Liz and I to work together and crank something out. All right. And then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna send it to all of you to get your responses in writing. And then we're gonna meet with Mike and Cecilia. How's that? Okay, Liz. Perfect. All right.
Um, before you move on from this, I just wanted to make sure this was not missed. Um, Leslie put a comment in the chat that says, I know I've seen, I've said this before, but I'm still so impressed with Liz and all that she's brought to our CSD and I'm so grateful to be on the LCAP committee. Let's make sure Liz saw that before.
Thank you, Leslie. You can expect a, uh, email pretty soon. We're gonna start up our meetings again. That's what you get for being nice. So thank you, Leslie.
Leslie, Leslie's great. Leslie's great. She definitely participates with us. She's the longest participating parent we've had since I've been superintendent. It's great. All right, Liz, thank you so much. You and I will schedule a meeting to put some things together and then get it back out to the board. How's that? Perfect. Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, Liz.
All right. I need to text Wendy real quick to now jump on. Hopefully she didn't go do something else.
I will say, when I went over to the Sequoia High School District Board Docs, I don't see any goals listed. So I think there's a variety of ways. My guess is school districts are doing this. So.
At some of the, I, I noticed that also, Lisa, the, the other districts are not listening to them.
Right, right. So that's how they're getting around all of this. So they don't have board goals. Cecilia, you know, I was thinking since you're in the masters in governance, um, well, actually, Mike, you are too. So both of you guys are much more refreshed in it than Maria, Janet and I are. I, I do think it would be great to dig into that particular chapter a little bit more, what they recommend. Um, and maybe you could even ask your instructor some ideas at your next session.
I was looking for my copy of the Governance Core. Um, I'm sure there's something in there that I'll talk about.
Yeah, great. I mean, we may as well not reinvent the wheel, right? Um, so. John, do you mind if we just, is Wendy gonna cop on? Otherwise we could take a two-minute break.
Why don't you take a two-minute break? Uh, that'd be great. I'm gonna go over to our office right now.
Okay.
I'm gonna say jump on in five minutes.
Okay, five minutes. So we'll be back at 10:28. No, I, no. Eighteen.
And eighteen. Okay.
Perfect. Let me answer that in a minute. So Wendy has the next portion and she is going to be talking about enrollment. And then we're gonna, I would like to have a discussion with you regarding the enrollment. Um, but I'm gonna let her start and I'm sure she's gonna, uh, be talking about enrollment in regard to our numbers from yesterday, since we don't have today's numbers yet. And as you know, yesterday we were at, um, uh, six twenty, sixty-two eighty-seven. So we came up about by 15 kids, if I'm not mistaken, from Wednesday. So Wendy, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, John. So I actually am going to put a link in the chat. Don't mind. It's a Google Doc. So please let me know if you are able to access it.
Do we need to put that up for, um, attendees too?
Yeah, we have one attendee, uh, Wendy Leslie, uh, Stafford's on. So you should make sure it goes out to attendees as well.
Okay. And I can share my screen. Actually, maybe I should go in that direction. Let's do that. So.
Oh, I need access. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let me share my screen for now. Then we'll go that route. So you should all be able to see my screen. At, at the top it says enrollment folder for day seven. And in this particular area on this document, what I did was I have a folder here, which I'll click on in just a minute. That just, that reviews everything for day seven. But what I did was after an analysis of the, uh, class sizes, uh, across the district based on contract numbers with RCTA. And then also our goal to have 25 to one in TK through second grade. There are some areas to note. Um, we are now today on day eight, so we still have a few more days. But this is like a dipstick in time where we're analyzing the current situation so that we can make movements next, um, next week if need be. So in this folder here, day seven, just clicked on it. Uh, there are a few documents here and Olivia Costa does an excellent job in our business office to compile all of this information. And so what we have here, I'm gonna click on the first document. This is a moment in time on day seven, which was yesterday. And you can see here by school and by grade level what the enrollment is. Okay. So that is, so for example, Adelante Selby Lane, if we go across, you can note that there are 25 TK. So that, that TK classroom is full from our point of view at this moment. And then as we progress along, you can see the numbers for each grade level for the total on the right-hand side. And then we have our SDC classes in here, of course. Okay. So I wanted to just show you this document first. And that shows all of the school sites. And then as we progress down, we see our, um, you know, our, our totals here on the right-hand side. And this is where John had mentioned our difference. We have 525 students uh, that are not in attendance from our original expected enrollment at the budget adoption date in June. So that is how we track it. So at this point, we're at 92.3% of our original projection. So not necessarily comparing to last year's projection, but what we originally projected for this year. And then this document continues on by showing what our special day class specific enrollment numbers are. Okay. Any questions on this particular document first?
This one here doesn't have the, um, uh, independent study number in it. Is that?
So yes, it does have the independent number in there because our independent study teachers are, are a teacher of record at each of the sites.
Right. Okay.
So for example, our eighth grade independent study teacher, Donna, she is divided by nine sites. There are nine schools that have eighth grade. So within those schools, that eighth grade number includes that, uh, those students for two reasons. One, because she needs to have access to all the curriculum to be a teacher of record and, and she is treated as if she's any other teacher in that regard. And number two, should a child decide to move from independent study to back to in-person, then we have a spot for that child. So that was, that was the intention.
Wendy, can you remind us what the enrollment was at the end of last year, our actual student enrollment?
So I, that's on a later document.
Okay, great. That's fine. We can get to it then. Cause I think we're like at 6,700 or something that, but I don't remember exactly.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other questions on this document from the board?
I just wanna say, I really appreciate Olivia putting this together. I do look at it every day and it's very useful.
Great. So glad. Good. All right. Let's take, I'm gonna jump here to this is, this is, uh, what we look at. So this, Elise is your numbers here on the left side. The 2021 CalPads enrollment, this first column by site. So this was the number, but, but, uh, it's 6,770 students to answer your question.
Are you gonna zoom in on that at all?
Oh, let me try that. There you go. Thank you. Looks beautiful on my screen. So thank you for that. Um, so on this particular document, what we are zeroing in on is the comparison, uh, as Lisa mentioned for uh, last year. And then each day out. So this is a different way of looking at data. On Thursday, August 26th, we were down, uh, 469 students from our 6,770 students. So this is a different way of looking at that same information. That prior document compared it to what the estimated enrollment would be for that we projected in June. This document is showing, uh, our current enrollment based on actual numbers from last year.
And Wendy, do you want to explain CalPads so that they have an understanding of it? Do you all understand what CalPads are? The CalPad reporting? So on, in October, there is a date that the school, that the state selects when you take that day of attendance at each of the school sites and that's your CalPad number. So normally it's like, I believe October 10th, 11th, somewhere around in there. So our CalPad number for the last school year was 6770. And that's how we are funded moving forward. Um, and they use that for also determining uh, supplemental concentration dollars. They also use it, uh, in the manner for any type of, uh, federal funding that the district will receive. So.
And also credentialing.
Oh, that's right.
All, all of our credentialing, uh, you know, uh, hires and so forth are all copacetic by that date.
Yeah.
Is that actually who's enrolled in that school system or who's actually in attendance that day?
Who is actually in attendance that day?
So if you have, let's say the flu comes through and you've got a bunch of people absent, then you just don't get those kids.
Right.
Okay.
The way it works in the office, um, on that level is once a child steps foot on campus and is counted as attendance, they are present. And then it's a typical year, right? They're absent if they have the flu or what have you. However, there's a different marking if they have not shown up yet. You have to be marked present that I, I showed up and I was, or, or virtually there to be counted as a student or else, and, and what the office staff meanwhile is doing is calling those that are missing in action, right? Where, where, where are you? You haven't shown up. I can't put a P next to your name yet. And P is the first day they're present. So on this particular day, it's in October. So the, the reason why it's in October is it's enough of an, a runway into the year that, you know, we wouldn't do this on day one. That would be silly because we have all these changes in the first 10 days. That's why the first 10 days and having that flexibility is really important. Because we have students that enroll late. We have students that were on vacation and come late. You know, there's lots of different reasons why people arrive. But once they have arrived, we mark them in a, in a certain way.
But, but it sounds like for the purpose of CalPads and all these various calculations, it's who's in attendance the day the state chooses, not who's actually enrolled with us. I think that's what John just said. I'm, I'm a little confused.
So the CalPads date, the CalPads date, they're taking a date and time. As Wendy said, we would not, they would not do it within the first 10 days. They don't do it within the first month. They wait until October because they figure by that time you'll have a really good sense of who is definitely, um, attending your school sites. There is that date, they're taking the number of kids that are in each classroom that there is a body in a seat. There is a body in a seat. There is also time, Alyssa, if you feel that the numbers are not showing exactly what we have, say because of the flu. We have 20 days from getting these numbers. We have four weeks, four calendar weeks where we can go back and say the flu hit and such and such. And that's why it's lower. But they're actually, if you don't do that, you're going to get the number that is here if you do not.
So it, so it is, it is the, I mean, it is, we have the opportunity to everybody who's enrolled with us. Okay. I, I understand that. Okay.
Okay. All right. So in, in regard, anyway, so this is an interesting document. One, because there's that comparison we just mentioned, but also you can, to this point of why stability occurs, you know, after day 10, you can just see the changes. Right? You can take a look at Adelante on day one. They were at minus 99 and now they're at minus 72. Right? So you, you can see how kids are added, um, from their original, uh, or from the CalPads enrollment. So we can see that comparison. All right. Any other thoughts or comments on this one?
In, not last year, but in years prior to that is that it probably follows a similar trend. I'm just wondering like Wednesday start, pre-Labor Day, do we see others? Because you can see a big step on Monday.
Right.
Uh, do we see another big one after Labor Day historically? Or does it really settle out after 10, even though it's still just August?
It tends to settle after 10.
Yeah, it does. And because Mike, we haven't started, um, because we started school so much earlier and people know, you have, you have the high school that starts even before we do. So people know already, you know, we are not, their school started, we need to get back. So since it's all in play, it, even right before, you know, kind of like today, I don't think it's gonna switch much. It's, there's not gonna be much
Right.
increase. Um, so we kind of look like Wednesday, we looked at it and said, uh, it's gonna be very little from moving forward.
Yeah, the, the first few days are, are significant. Um, and then it tends to, you know, whittle out and, and, and ongoing throughout the year, right? This just isn't perfect on day 10, but there's pluses and minuses as we go along, but they're insignificant in the realm of the total count. All right. Moving forward, um, our next, this one's really small. So I'm gonna definitely blow this up. Hope you can see it. Okay. This is a different view. This is looking at, um, historically over time, what our, when our projections were, when our actual enrollment was, and you can see the years at the top here. It's color-coded. Note that in last school year, this was not done at this level. I actually asked Olivia, I said, love to compare school by school on day seven from last year. And she said, oh, I'm so sorry, but we can do that from 1920. So she sent that to me actually this morning, just out of interest. I was curious to know. Um, but, and I can send that to you if you're interested as well. But what we do here is focus on this orange box. And this is when Olivia is populating each day. Notice in our first document I showed you, it was 92.31% of the projected enrollment. So, and, and that number is then stable. This is what the projected enrollment was. And you could see that from your year.
That's this year? I think there's a typo on it because it says 2020, 21.
Oh yes, that's right. I'll tell Olivia. Good point. That is 2122. Thank you. So as the days go by, you can see how it increases to that point, Mike, is just, there's more significant increase, percentage increase in the beginning. And then it, it tapers off a bit. And that what happens year over year, as you can see here. So the hard part of about looking at this particular document is So the hard part of about looking at this particular document is you see seven thousand six hundred and forty five projected. We had a large gain in seventeen eighteen, right? We were over a hundred percent. And you can really see how those numbers then change over the course of the last few years.
Do we know, um, where those students have gone?
Well, based on conversations with office managers, anecdotal conversations. It's primarily cost of living.
And now with people being able to work from home and don't have to work in the same area where their company is located. It's even made it larger that people have moved out of the Bay Area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was curious if we saw, um, anymore students moving over to our charter schools. Particularly with Rocketship taking over the pause site, no, not, not great numbers.
No, no.
Alright, so the main document I wanted to focus on today is the, um, is the site by teacher. So the, this is what John was mentioning earlier, the head count. This is not a power school count, this is a head count. And what that means is that teachers are physically marking an attendance sheet, a piece of paper that they receive every day. For the first ten days, and we've done this historically, except last year. Um, and they count heads, and so they take attendance accordingly. And that information gets sent to the office. The office then includes the independent study folks, because that's a different variable this year. And then they produce this document, and this is the document that then Olivia takes. And, um, compiles the data to make those other documents that we just viewed. So what I do with this information from HR's point of view. Um, and as district wide analysis is take a look at class size. So I'm, I want to make sure that the teachers are abiding and the principals are, can abide by, by contracts. So in our contract, it states that TK, Kinder in first grade can be at thirty to one. And second grade onward can be thirty one to one. However, we have this desire this year to have class size be at twenty five to one for TK through second grade. So what I'm zeroing in on here is one, to make sure that that is indeed in alignment. And if not, we need to hire a teacher or make a decision to move students in between. Teachers at the school site, or worst case scenario, need to move a child to another school site. So that's what's happening, and so on day seven, I just did a dipstick in time. But with that, I'll look at that with much more scrutiny on day nine. And, um, and then the administrators will take action, which means that the staff at the school site will call. The students' families affected, usually last registered in, and, and, and talk about what moves are needed. So they will work with our registration department and our school of choice, uh, Melanie, and so forth, for that to occur. So right now, yesterday, I did this for day six, and I just reached out to the principals and said, I, I want to make sure your eyes are. On this, uh, data, which there were, of course.
Right. So to move in another direction with this, and this is a really good example for us to look at. When you see the, the grade levels here, you will see that the classroom sizes are small. In an ordinary year, what Wendy and I would be talking about is, okay, how can we make combination classes? How can we move kids around? And then that would then also assist, uh, in our budgeting, um, moving forward. But my recommendation for all of us, for my recommendation to you as a school board, is to not do that this year. Make combinations, move kids around to other classrooms when there is, when there are small classes, as you see here. Due to the last eighteen months of the pandemic and virtual learning, in-person learning. Now we've got everybody, the majority of our kids back. My recommendation is just that we move forward with what it looks like this year, and not do that movement. Hopefully, as we move through this school year and things settle down with the virus. It'll be a different story next year when we are allotting, um, teachers to each school. But at this point in time, for the twenty one, twenty two school year, I am not going to make a recommendation. In schools where there are low class sizes, to start making combination classes and shuffling kids. Questions? Comments?
Comment, um, in regards to what Wendy said, and I understand what you just said about, um, staying with the numbers we have. Um, Wendy mentioned that if there were too many students, rather than maybe getting a teacher. Maybe having to move students to another school. Um, I hope those numbers are actually, uh, done before the school starts. So that we don't have any angry parents, because they may have been at the same school site, so.
So that's a very good question. Um, we will get to that in a moment, Cecilia. Because that is going to happen, and, and that's something we need to discuss. Because we had come to an agreement that with the additional dollars, we wanted to maintain that our TK. Our K, our first and our second would be at a lower class size of twenty five students per teacher. At some of our schools, and Wendy will, in a few slides coming up. Will, uh, give you that information of where it is more than twenty five students per teacher. Or maybe in another grade level above second grade, where it's even above thirty or thirty one. So, um, in an ordinary time, and because we do have extra dollars. It would be, let's hire an aide and see if that would work for our classrooms. But as she'll get to later, the vacancy list that we have right now for employees is huge. We can't find instructional assistants, we can't find food service workers, we can't find some of our own teachers for our specialized programs. So, um, like I said, in years past, we could probably have a remedy. Right now, it doesn't seem like that remedy of hiring additional staff would be possible. Even though Jorge is going to put out to our community members, um, a list of vacancies that we have. And if you know of anyone, to please contact HR, uh, as soon as possible. So, we will get to your question, but I know what you're thinking. But it's hard to avoid doing the movement, um, for some of our grade levels this school year.
And to add on to that, John, and I mentioned this to the principals yesterday, is luckily, that number, Cecilia, is quite small. Which we would have to move to another site. Um, but I'm gonna show you, site by site, what that will look like. And we can have that, you know, continued conversation. I do want to let you know, I think part of this is a communication concern to families. Where their lovely child has been sitting in his great classroom and then all of a sudden gets yanked out. That, that is disheveling for the student. However, Isabel in our registration does a really great job informing families that within the first ten days. There is fluctuation with registration, with enrollment. There is a, a document that families do receive when they register that states that on there. Especially late registrations in the first ten days, there is movement. So that, that over the time has been, you know, a way to kind of prepare families mentally for some minor changes that might have to happen. That could affect their child. So let's go through this together. I want to show you Adelante Selby Lane as an example. Um, we have our TK, so this is organized by teacher on the left. Independent study students are at the very bottom, you can see there are eight total, and it spans the grade levels. So, we have here twenty four TK, which falls within the twenty five to one ratio. And then the, the Kinder as well, alright? And our first grade's at twenty three in this particular case, and second grade is even lower. So that's second grade. In a typical year, I would say to John, oh, we need to make some changes here, we need to make some combination classes. Or look at our other, our sec, our first grade or our third grade and do that. But as John mentioned, we're, we're just watching these numbers. Now typically, you would even these out, so maybe it's eighteen in each class or nineteen or what have you. But once a, a student is familiar and gets into the routine, that's fine, and with these low numbers, it's, it's reasonable. But there, so there are a few things that happen within the first ten days, one leveling of classes. And two, looking at whether movements need to happen. So in this particular case, we also have to take into account our, uh, independent study. Because at any one moment, these children can return. So we have here, uh, in first grade, two students in independent study, so therefore that would add. So there'd be a class of twenty four, two classes of twenty four here, and that, and, and as we continue on. So from my point of view, from staffing, uh, teachers, Adelante is fine. We don't need to add another teacher, or potentially close a classroom or what have you. Okay, any questions on Adelante? Because this is, I just want to give a little bit more detail as we progress on. Okay. Towards the end of Adelante sheet, you see the total count of five hundred and eighty here on the right. And this is head count, remember? The power school count differs every day, because kids are coming, kids are leaving. Um, kids may not be showing up, so that's why we rely on that head count, and then we revert to power school on day eleven. So, alright, then we progress on, here's Clifford. So Clifford's situation is that they have their TK, their Kinder classrooms, which are under twenty five. Now their first grade, take a look, it's twenty four, twenty three, and twenty seven. So this is an example, and I spoke to Jude yesterday. Um, unless there's movement by day ten, this group of twenty seven will need to be dispersed to Ms. Keithley. Or Mr. Riley's classrooms. So we take two students out and we put, you know, either both of them in Mr. Riley, or one in Ms. Keithley, or what have you. And it also has to depend on independent study, you know, that's another factor. So this will be a situation in which Dionne Smith will have two children move to, but staying at the same school, which is great. And I'm sure that's the parent's primary concern. Okay, as we progress along in these grade levels, these are all within contract, except for, well, not except for, I should say. Thirty three looks glaring in sixth grade. Um, and so what will happen here is that in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it reverts to contacts. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers can have up to a hundred and seventy contacts a day. So when you add this up to sixty three, we're of course clearly within guidelines. Alright, so that's a little different in the middle school. The K five relies on class size, we strive for thirty one to one, but with scheduling in the middle school, it doesn't always work out that way. And that's okay per the contract. Alright, similar to how you can have forty kids in PE at one time, that's a little sidestep. Questions on Clifford? Alright, and as we progress along down here, we also are looking at the SDC classrooms. So you can see here, these counts for, um, SDC are appropriate and in alignment with contracts. So I'm also checking that and working with Dr. Polino. Alright, and so, I'm, I'm sorry, one more thing. You can see here, five hundred and eighty five general ed students, six hundred and eighteen special ed, and general ed students combined for a total. Uh, of six eighteen.
Actually, Wendy, can I ask a question? So, um, because this will be a similar question I would have for any of the school sites. So if you go back up to the first grade and Dionne Smith, having the twenty seven.
Yes.
I think what I heard you say is you would go back and look who enrolled last.
Yes.
Um, to try to determine who those two students would be, who would move. Um, and let's say that everybody was already here in kindergarten, because they just kind of roll over, don't they? I don't know if they, so, so I guess my question is, is it ever, do you ever go out to the class to ask who wants to move? Or do you do a lottery, or is there some kind of metric that you are able to distinguish last in?
Oh, you mean if, if all twenty seven were kindergartners at Clifford?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's a good point, so it, it still goes back to original registration.
Okay.
Isn't that, that's what my understanding is? Um, because, well, and sometimes, you know, and, and what makes it a little bit difficult is if there's siblings involved and, you know, all that kind of thing. However, in this particular case, we're still keeping the children at Clifford, which is great, that's, that's an intention. It's just evening out the classes in this regard.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I just know from a parent standpoint, um, you know, it doesn't really matter. I mean, they're gonna be upset if, if they don't want to move and we move them, so.
Right, true. I do think, though, that we can do a better job as we progress on, of taking a look at what these are. Prior to May's Day, which is, you know, within a week or so of starting. I do think that's our next step for site administrators and office staff to look at. You know, they do a great job creating balanced classes in May, and they move forward, and then there's all this fluctuation over the summer. But I think we can do another dipstick when it, when we get to, um, a few days before May's Day, so we can work on that for next year.
That's great, I, I think that would be helpful, I mean, as much as can be done ahead of time.
Agreed.
People just get their expectations set.
Right.
That's kind of my question, though, is how did that classroom start with twenty seven to begin with? If, if we knew the cap was gonna be twenty five?
Well, they could have all started at twenty seven, and there could have been drops over the summer, based on the classes that were formed last year, that's one example. You know, I, we'd have to go back and look historically, what was it in May? What was the expectation in the class count? What was all the transition over the summer? And that's why my suggestion of taking, you know, like, let's say August first, we take a dipstick and say. Based on summer changes, granted, there's about a hundred ins and outs in the first two weeks of August, district wide, maybe a hundred and fifty. But. So, so that's the primary reason, Janet, is that these could have been very even. And probably were very even when school, uh, was dismissed in June. It's the fluctuation over the summer. Like you can see here in third grade, see, it's like perfect twenty seven, twenty seven. I'd be curious to go back here and take a look and see what these numbers were in May, when they submitted their classes for next year, the second grade team. So. Okay.
Wendy, there was a question in the chat, where's, are there any independent study students at Clifford? Or not noted here?
These are, so, yes, and that is something that the, that's something that the principals are, are working on with Olivia on how to report that.
Okay.
At Clifford, it's absorbed in these numbers, which is fine, that actually helps us out. Because we already know our independent study staff have, um, have their own rosters. However, what we're really concerned about is making sure that these numbers are perfect, meaning under twenty five in this case for primary grades. So that when the kids return back, they, um, they have a spot. So the, at the board meeting, John mentioned and showed the grade levels, for example Clifford, and, and what that, um, what that breakdown looked like. So Jude has that on a separate document, so I agree, there are some inconsistencies in these rosters.
So that could be then, that Dionne Smith doesn't have twenty seven kids in the classroom. That could include, you know, two independent study students. It might end up in a different classroom when they come back, and Jude just put it onto that class, is that correct?
Um, so, no, because what the directive was, was that. These numbers here as shown have to be twenty five to one or lower. And the two independent study students should be absorbed in here. Because we're making an assumption that at any moment, those students are gonna come back and return in person. So if they, if Dionne Smith, if those two students, let's say there were two independent study kids in first grade. Then they should not be on Dionne's roster. Right? Because at any one moment, they could come back, and then she would actually have twenty seven bodies in the room, and we don't want that. We want twenty five.
Right, so I guess what I was asking is, could that possibly be that there's two independent study students that just need to be bumped to a different classroom? The number looks that way?
Yeah, so whether they're independent study or in person, yes, that leveling out needs to occur. So, and, and this is a perfect time to. So, and, and this is a perfect time to do that because those independent study students. Actually don't know the teacher yet.
Yep.
Right? So that is, that is something that the administrator will be working on. If those are truly two independent study students and they can easily go into. Maureen Keith Lee or Chris Riley's room. Because they don't know Dion. I'm worried a little bit more about when we're in October. And, or in, or, or they flip-flop back and forth. We're hoping for the student to have the consistency of the same Clifford in-person teacher throughout the year attached to the child. Does that make sense? Because a principal asked the other day, well, let's say. I have a, an independent study student, let's say in Dion Smith's room. And then they come back in person and there I are with Dion. And then they leave again. And they go on independent study. But in the meantime, I have an in-person student enroll. Can I put that independent study student when they return back in Chris Riley's room? And we said, no, we, we.
That makes sense. I, it feels like it makes more sense to have it the way the Adelante Selby was where it's broken out. You can actually see.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. I told Jude that last night, actually. He's like, I'll work on that for tomorrow, Wendy. So. Okay, so that is spec- okay, so that's Clifford. Roy Cloud is stable. You can see here their numbers. They do have a few low class sizes, but I know we're not focusing on that. Normally that's our, our gut reaction here is to do that. Um, their sixth grade is lower here. You can see twenty-two, twenty-five, fifteen. However, remember it's about contacts. For the teacher too. So there's still some wiggle room here for sure. It's interesting, sixth grade is a natural time for families to take their children and move. Uh, because you know, there's a break usually between elementary and middle school in general. So we tend to see um, fluctuation in sixth grade district wide. That's very natural and normal. Okay, so that's Roy Cloud. She did properly look at these virtual classes. So they documented this properly here. So their first grade class has three. So we would add those students to these count up here for the, for parody, present people. Right? That's how we would manage those numbers. And then we have one here in fourth grade and three in sixth grade. But there does need to be a little balancing of classes in that sixth grade. We can't have a class of fifteen and a class of twenty-five, so that should be evened out. Okay, so that's Roy Cloud. And then we have a special day class there as well. Okay, Henry Ford. John, how much time do I have?
You're, you're, you're fine.
Okay, alright. Cause I actually have all of the concerns on a snapshot on my Google Doc. Uh, so I don't know if you want me to go through one by one, but.
Yeah, so Wendy, I'll, I'll say that, I, I don't know if, what the other board members have done, but I actually went through the document already. Cause you sent us the link, so I've looked through it. I am kind of curious about those outliers, but if it's useful for everybody to go through, I'm happy just to go through it, whatever works for folks.
What's the preference of the rest of the group?
We, we happen to be on one that I think we want to hear about, um, Henry Ford.
Right.
But we use the, um, I, I, I think using the snapshot to guide where we want to go and jump to the schools that are. Would be, I think that'd be a good use of time.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about Henry Ford and then maybe I'll, I'll switch over to the Google Doc and then we can go back and forth. Does that sound like a great compromise? Okay. Alright, so Henry Ford. We have here our kindergarten, which is lower than twenty-five. There's a little wiggle room in here. Uh, notice it says independent studies included in above, so the school did that. And I, I agree, we have to make this uniformed. Um. First grade is where our area of concern is in regards to being at twenty-eight here. However, we could move two students, one in. Uh, the Jones class and one in Condi's class. And then we will have two that would need to. Leave the school or, or. Make a combo. That's in a typical year what we would consider. So in this case, this twenty-eight needs to be addressed.
Can I, can I ask Wendy? Cause this, this is actually one of the things when I was looking through that I had a question about is. You know, we have the contract numbers, which were below the contract numbers. And then we have our goal that we set for ourselves, that really is our own personal goal. I mean, I've been struggling with when I look at these is. I mean, and it's partly a conversation with the teachers' union and the teachers, although we're within contract, no matter what we do with, you know, with some of what we've seen. I mean, do we, would it be less disruptive and better just to keep it at twenty-five, twenty-five? Twenty-six? No.
Yeah.
No, just twenty, yeah, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six versus trying to do some combos like you just said. Cause.
Yes. Well, the other alternative is we move one child.
Right. A- and also that's disruptive, right, for the family. Um. So, you know, personally, I don't know what the other board members think. I mean, I know our goal has been twenty-five, but like, if there's just a few that are at twenty-six. And it saves a lot of either combos or disruption of a student having to move the classroom. Are we open to that? Is there some reason why we're digging in on the twenty-five as some magical number? It's not in the contract, right? It's, it's the goal. But I don't, I don't know the.
So that's the discussion, Lisa, that.
Okay, good. Okay.
Have with.
Okay, great. Cause.
I'm, like I say, I'm not recommending at this point in time, if they're, you know, if they're lower and all of that, to start doing all these combinations and moving. But what I wanted us to co- to have the discussion on is for, this is a very good example right here. In the past, what we would try and do is maybe offer a, an instructional assistant to this, to the, to the teacher because we did want it to be at twenty-five. But we don't have that luxury now because of all the vacancies that we have. And some of those vacancies are instructional assistants. Um, so that's the impetus for this discussion today.
Okay.
In regard to this. So I, I hear from you that you don't want to have disruption. Um, and this was kind of a, it's not in contract, as you said. Uh, the contract is uh, thirty. Uh, for the students. We try to, you know, and do our best at that. But how does the rest of the board feel? Because we have to do something because contract language does say within ten days, if we're going to.
Hmm, make any changes, we have to do it.
We should make those changes. And Wendy, I don't know what um, you have heard from any union members in regard to this.
Well, they're usually radio silence till day ten and then I, Aaron Washburn. But, but I would like to offer just a few more um, items on that topic, John, because. Uh, you know, one new variable that came to light after the decision of the class size reduction for twenty-five to one was um. Was put into place last June is that, or, or this, this. Striving towards it, I should say, is independent study. So we could very well have one student in Abby Wilkerson's class, who is gonna be on independent study all year long. And we just don't know.
She doesn't have any first grade.
Or, or even first grade in general?
Uh, and Henry, at Henry Ford, there, there are no first graders.
Okay, alright. So then that is um, something to consider. So that might be something where we just, you know, maybe we strive for a range. You know.
Yeah, I mean, my, oh, go ahead. I think I expressed my opinion, but just so I'm clear. I mean, my preference would be just to. Get as close as we can to the twenty-five for those that are high, as long as we're meeting the contract. Cause I do think it's very disruptive. I think at the end of the day, the teachers would probably rather have a, a single grade they're teaching with one more student than have a. A multiple. You know, grade with one or two less students. I don't know. I mean, and all, and also, these are all lower numbers than we've been doing for years. So. Anyway, Janet, go ahead. Sorry, I interrupted.
And Janet, Janet, just before you, you, you say something, um, so then if we go in that direction, then what you would want us to do. If I heard you correctly, was to say like at uh, Wilkerson and you, you move, you know, one, you, you make twenty-five, twenty-five, you move two, yes, twenty-six. You would want to, to keep it where it is right now. So if there was a new student coming in. A new student coming in after ten, don't place them in first grade at Henry Ford. We would have to find a space for them somewhere else. As we normally do during the school year, when there is no space at that grade level at that site. Is that what I hear you saying, Lisa? Kind of cap it where, you know, if that's what we're doing, we would cap it where it is on day ten.
Well, I guess, you know, we've done that traditionally, like if you were at thirty.
One or third.
Thirty, well, I guess for first grade, you'd be at thirty. We wouldn't allow any more Henry Ford kids in there. I mean, I think what's harder is when. They've actually been showing up, they're in the teacher's classroom, they're at that school. For us to make changes, but for new people coming in, it's easy enough to say, we don't have room at Henry Ford, right? I, I don't know. Um.
It's what I, I just want to.
Yeah, yeah. And that's just my, uh, you know, I, I could. Be talked into other things. I, I don't know what's the best. I, I'm just trying to think what's best for the family and the student.
Alright, Janet, go ahead. Sorry.
So, because we have this goal of twenty-five in K-one and two, I, I would like to see us stick to that. Um, as much as possible. So, you know, in a case like Abby's here, I. Maybe even just talking to her, maybe she doesn't care. Maybe she's fine with twenty-eight instead of twenty-five. Um, in which case I wouldn't try to move the kids and disrupt them. But otherwise I would like to see them, you know. You know, move one over. To each of the other two classes. So it's twenty-five, twenty-five and twenty-six. And then after that, I would cap it. And I would say, no new students can come to that classroom. They'd have to go to a different school. So that's, that's what I would like to see.
Mike?
So you're saying Janet, just to make sure that I, I hear you, that you think, you, you don't want to see that extra student moved out off the site? Cause that's also part of the discussion here.
Yeah.
Eh, yes, um. I would prefer not to see them moved off-site. Um, it's not in the contract. I still would. You know, Wendy, I don't know how you feel about it, but just checking with Abby to see. You know, I, I kind of know Abby and I would think that she would be fine with it, but I'm not gonna speak for her.
Yeah, so, so one, um. What will happen on day ten with Erin Washburn? Is she will say, you are not, you know, you're fine within contract. However, money was put forth from the board to lower class size. Sorry, excuse me, you have a cold. Um. And so therefore, you know, are you honoring that? And I would say, well, we're striving towards that. However, you know, it's more disruptive to move one student and we're still within contract. So that, so after this conversation today, right? So she won't really, she doesn't really have a say in it. And for Abby, I think what the hard part is, is that we, we were telling everyone it was gonna be twenty-five to one. And so now here's a scenario where it's not. And it just, how do we communicate that properly?
Right. And it's not only, you know, just at Henry Ford, and that's several of our other schools at, at, at different grade levels. And we had that conversation with the principals yesterday. And as I told them, I was meeting with board, with. The board today so that we could finalize what this would look like. Just so we're all on the same page. So I've heard from three board members that. We try to keep it at the twenty-five, but also see if there's some flexibility because we're not. We're within contract language. So what, what about um, Maria and Cecilia?
I wanted, one other question to ask real fast. I mean, can we? Is, is there a possibility that there is a family in there that would want to transfer, seeing the lower enrollment in that grade at other schools that often are. Popular schools of choices?
We can check that. We can check and see if there's a way, uh, if, uh, we can look on the waitlist for another s- school of choice to see if. There's a family that's in the first grade that has selected. That school of choice, but didn't get in because of numbers at the time or whatever.
So I would say that um, we just need to be fair across the board. So. Um, with just what Janet just said about, maybe she knows that teacher um, specifically and maybe the teacher that's in line. And of course, I understand, she says she did not want to speak. In behalf of the teacher. But if we're gonna be flexible, then again, we would have to be flexible across the board. So if. The people that are enrolling students into the different school sites. Um, I would say they really need to watch those numbers. So that even if we go over one number, that's okay. But if we're gonna go. Three or more than, than that defeats the purpose of us trying to stick to the twenty-five. Um. So I, that would just be my comment. I, I would be flexible to not stick to the twenty-five. But maybe not go over twenty-seven or something like that. Cause then again, you know, one or two could be okay. I would say try to even the numbers out because if we're gonna be flexible, and let's just say. Um, taking Henry Ford as the example and Abby having twenty-eight. Say she says she's okay with twenty-eight, but what if the other people are not, right? Then it just opens up, so it opens up a can of worms. Um.
Well, and to be honest, this is an easier school. We do have one or two that are more than twenty-eight. Like Hoover.
Can I just, can I just ask then? Why does that happen? Like, why is there more than twenty-eight when? I, I know we were not really being, I guess, sticklers to the twenty-five. We mentioned it. Um. I, I guess I'm just trying to understand how enrollment works and how they. And I don't want to blame those people, right? But how they didn't see that those numbers were already, already above the twenty-five.
Yeah. So I, I have some thoughts about this. And part of this is regarding. Moving from revenue limit to basic aid, just in this last couple of years or what have you. In the past, you know, this system worked really well because. We wanted to make sure all students had a spot and then we would take these ten days and. Funding was based on enrollment and so forth. So there was that additional layer. However, we could entertain this idea, and John and I have talked about this briefly in the past, is. To sort of set the limit, you know, on January first. So know what our staffing will be. Um. As we move into the fall in January and say, we will have three kinder teachers at Henry Ford. So we can, you know, we can enroll up to. You know, in the past, it was twenty-eight, right? Our LCAP funded money so that we could have twenty-eight to one, even though the contract says thirty. And in this case, it's twenty-five. And then once that twenty-five number is hit, it's locked unless a student leaves. Then we go to that plus minus. But we say, these are the staff that we have at the site first and the seats that we have. And then we can fill accordingly. So there are other districts that do it that way. Um, in basic aid, I just, I don't think that we've um, analyzed that quite yet for being in this new funding format. Uh, through basic aid. So that is another way to do that, which would maybe minimize these issues because. If a parent enrolled in Henry Ford and they would be student twenty-six in this case. You know, the conversation could happen at the registration desk. Oh, I'm so sorry, Henry Ford isn't available right now. We can put your name on the list, however I can enroll you at Roosevelt or what have you. So, or another school that's open. So that's looking ahead. That doesn't solve this immediate issue, but I do think there's some work to analyze that. For the future.
I think that um. You guys need to do. Um, the best as possible to meet our goal. But if you look across. There are some that have less than twenty-five. So as long as you try, there are some families that. Absolutely cannot move their student because there's no childcare, there's no transportation, et cetera, and et cetera. So I think that we're gonna have to. Try and figure out how to meet their needs as well. So. I'm okay with you guys trying to work towards the goal of twenty-five. Um, and then do, you know, do our best by our students because I, I think that. Moving them from one side to the other is disruptive, moving them out of the classroom. There are some students who. Really want a particular teacher for whatever and don't like another. So um. You at the site and, and you know, whoever's at the side would have a much better. Uh, grasp of those things. So that's where I'm at.
So Wendy, let's go to the, to the slide that has the schools on it with the additional students. That we were talking to the principals about yesterday.
Oh, the slide with the additional students. Oh, yes.
Or, or than, right? Yeah.
Okay. So what I did was I, I analyzed that most recent document that I was showing you by site. And just put areas to note, because once again, this is sort of a dipstick. Adelante Selby Lane, second grade has lower enrollment numbers, but that's okay. It's still within the twenty-five, but it's just something to note. We talked about Clifford would need to be moved internally. And maybe not now, based on our conversations, you know, this was just as of yesterday. First grade could actually add transfers in if that's the case through school of choice, because we also have that whole avenue that we can look at. And then the Henry Ford, we just spoke about that. In this case, if we were to meet the twenty-five to one, the two would need to be moved and so forth. We just spoke about that. Garfield, we have one first grade student who would need to be moved internally, which means to another first grade class. But their sixth grade looks like it has high numbers. So we would either talk to the teachers about the hundred and seventy contacts, which is possible and may work itself out just fine. And worst case scenario, two sixth grade teachers would be need to, excuse me, students would need to be moved to another site. But we still have that contract language, so that is going to be fine. So Orion, MI, excuse me, and my Orion Alternative actually has very low enrollment K five. And so if we go back and look at another document, that would be the one I would suggest. And what we do, our next step actually, and this is a perfect day to be doing that on Friday, is to look at students that want to transfer into Orion that may be on a waitlist or what have you. And if that is available, some of these issues may work itself out. But this is a school to be watching this year for their enrollment. And then we have Hoover. So Hoover was my bigger concern. We have six second graders that would need to be moved in order to meet the twenty-five to one. So we may want to go back and look at that particular roster. Five English only and one bilingual. And then the middle school classes, just to note, has an average, a low enrollment of about a twenty-four to one average. So just something to keep on our radar. No action needed, but just a note. Kennedy and MIT, there's some decline there, which we know we have district wide. I just wanted to put these facts in here. But MIT is a little bit more concerning at this point with approximately seventy students that, a decrease of seventy students. North Star, I added, we may add based on the waitlist. So these were just calculations I made based on contracts, numbers where we could add students to North Star if they exist and that works for North Star and families. Roosevelt, we have low enrollment, but within appropriate numbers in second, third, sixth and seventh grade. Nobody's over in Roosevelt. And then Taft, their second grade English only is low. We are watching their K-one combination classes as twenty-six to one, but two are technically an independent study. So that's one of those examples where those children could be out for the entire year. And so it's a moot point, but they could come back at any time. So I think that's almost like that Henry Ford conversation or Clifford. So this was my snapshot after analyzing those rosters. Would you like to discuss one of these further?
So I would just comment that on the Hoover site, being that it's, it, it looks like it's the biggest class with six students that would need to move to another site. Again, if we could be flexible, I would prefer, and again, I totally understand when we first started having this conversation that John said that maybe that's something that just needs to happen. If they need to move to another class, that's different. If they need to move to another site, that is another, that, that takes everybody to another level, whether the transportation, whether the students anxiety, the fact that they haven't been with those students. You know, it, it just makes it, you know, takes it to another level. So if we could be flexible with not sticking to the twenty-five, but again, maybe not going more than three plus, I would prefer to do that. Just, you know, thinking of the students, just well-being and, you know, everything that goes with it.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, Cecilia, on that point, like with Hoover, I'm wondering for those classrooms, it kind of looks like, particularly like in the second and third, you know, could we, this is where you would bring in the instructional assistant or even like another guest teacher who could help push in? I don't, you know, I don't know. I, I am with you. I mean, I think the disruption of trying to move students out of a particular school, unless we offer and say, oh, by the way, look, we have some really low class sizes over in Orion as an example. Would you like to move over there? You know, it's a different sort of thing than forcing people out of a school. Or really reshuffling a whole bunch of classrooms to make it work, right?
Yeah, I think the glaring one is.
Thirty-one.
Yeah, Ms. Sasha, it's an English-only second grade. And the only English-only second grade. So that would either be a combination class, a transfer out to a school of choice that works. That would be ideal because that's a parent wish anyway. However, it does meet contract language. So.
So they could stay, they could stay.
Right, I mean, what's hard from an equity standpoint is these are the schools that would be great to have smaller class sizes, right? So the teacher could really work with the students. And we look at some of our other schools that have these really small class sizes. But.
I like the phrase striving for twenty.
Striving, yeah.
But this one.
That works for me.
This one concerns me in particular, number one, because of the equity issue that Elisa mentioned. But transportation, another school site, could be a, a really big hurdle for these families. So if, you know, if they had want to transfer out to a different school, that's, that's a different story. But I'm concerned about moving students who then have issues getting across town to a school that has availability for them.
And we do.
The distance from Hoover to Orion is significant.
Right, we do have the overflow bus. We do have that transportation piece in place.
But even so, you know, traditionally, this is the site where I would get most of the parents upset when they couldn't get in. So, you know, and it's again, who's going to pick up the child? Where's the transportation? And all those kinds of issues is before and after. And it's usually the little ones that they have more trouble with. So again, I would like us to think about those issues and strive for it, but do what we can to lower the class size, push in support and ask if they're willing to move first. And if they can do that, that would be my option for them.
Okay, so we will look at each of these individually. And we have both heard where you would like us to strive to maintain that students are at the school sites where they are located at this point in time. And to see if we could do, and this is a real hard part, because Wendy and her team have been trying to hire people since before school ended last year. We have so many vacancies that we're unable to fill at this time due to the fact that people are not applying. And Wendy and her team are putting out the postings, not only on EdJoin, but in many, many different locations to find people. The next step is that Jorge will put out a communicate to the community to see if we can find some people that would be interested in working for us in different positions. And, and what we will do is also work with these principals and teachers to see we're striving for that twenty-five, but we're unable to get there for A, B and C reason. And you're still within contract, but we are going to see what other possible support we can get you. I just don't know, Wendy, when that timeframe would be about the additional support due to the fact that it's been such a hardship on us to try and find people to fill these vacancies.
Right. Well, interestingly enough, I, hiring for an elementary position, certainly an English-only one, is more appealing than hiring for a middle school position. And I, and I will have a more detailed report about that in a little bit. Just as you know, we had an allocation for five FTE to lower class size to start out with, just to make sure that we were copacetic for the beginning of the year. And we placed one at Hoover. So Mr. Lopez, right here, is an additional teacher that was out of that COVID funds in order to, so, so even with that teacher, we have these numbers like this. So either we move forward, I think with Janet's suggestion, where we move students that want school of choice or what have you. I could put a posting out there, John, to manage this, which would lower classes even, size even much more in, in that range. But that might also then result in, in some other additional type of combination situation. I don't know if that's appealing or not. Where we might say like a, a one-two, right, English-only teacher to lower class size. Be managing those six.
Well, it would be managing those six, but it would also lower the class size, especially at Hoover with this equity lens that we're looking at two at the same time. So I would, Wendy and, and board members, I would recommend to let's see if we can find another teacher, English-only, to assist us with this. We do have still some Esther dollars and we just need to touch base with Priscilla to put it on that. You know how she is about the line and the number that we could, you know, we could do that if we could find somebody.
I do have somebody that could start in October who's finishing her credential.
Well, that's.
Available till October. We were going to make her a, a roving guest teacher at this point because she wanted elementary and I didn't have an opening.
So, so why don't we look at that? If, if the board is in agreement to go in this direction, then we will go in this direction for this piece here at, at Hoover.
So just for that point is that might be then an additional plus one.
Right.
I know, okay, all right.
Right. Is that thumbs up with everybody? Cecilia, I'm going to ask you because I can't see you. Okay, I can see it. She said yes. All right, that will do. And with other schools, we will work internally with the principal and the teachers to see how we can make it work and have children stay at those sites and not move, you know, from one classroom to another. Not unless there is, for example, maybe there are some kids in, in Abby's class that would like to move. Who knows? But, but we'll find out.
Okay, yeah, I have that on the list.
Can I just ask something really fast? I, it sounds like we're prioritizing stability over class size. Is that the right trade-off? Intuitively, that's what it kind of feels like to me, but I want to make sure that.
It is.
I feel like we're landing on the right side of that split.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. I think, Mike, Mike, my experience, not only as a classroom teacher, but as a site administrator, and I remember my first year at Hoover and the superintendent said, you're losing two teachers and make it work. And and being at a new school, I hadn't been at Hoover before, not even as a teacher. I was coming from Selby Lane as the principal and, and for a year because that, that principal took a leave. And not knowing the community and then having to come in and say, you know, because my numbers, my number, it was a numbers game. And I, and I was overstaffed by two. He said, make it work. That is horrendous. You're losing two teachers and you're mixing kids throughout the school. And whatever we can do to maintain stability not only helps the parent and the student, but it helps the staff and the site administrator, believe me.
Can I?
It also helps out in the community. Sorry, Elisa.
Yeah.
Happier parents and people.
I, because that was a, I, I, I can still remember that week, the parents and crying and it's like, oh, my gosh. But whatever we can do to stabilize and keep it in the manner in which we have it right now. Sometimes we're not able to do that because of the funding and you, you just don't have enough students. But I think we're very fortunate now because we do have the additional dollars that we have banked. These are Esther dollars that are federal funded dollars that we could utilize those funds and we're utilizing, utilizing them in a place where we're meeting the needs of students. So we'll be fine.
So I just wanted to confirm, because when I, you know, looked at the data pretty quickly and Wendy and John, you guys have looked at it more closely. What I saw is it did feel like the Hoover was probably the most glaring from an equity standpoint and the need, as we just discussed, to bring on another teacher and help with that. And it seems like the rest are pretty close to the twenty-five for the lower grades. And then within the contract language for the upper grades, were there any other schools kind of with that equity lens that we ought to be talking, any other grades, any other?
The only one, the only one that Wendy showed was the, the two sixth graders that are at, I believe, Garfield.
Oh, Garfield, okay, let's look at that real quick.
So I just want to make sure that we talk to the teachers first. And maybe what we do, because that's contract language. And normally, knowing Garfield, the teachers are going to want to keep the kids.
I, I just would like to remind, actually, middle school is contacts.
So then we, are we, are we okay with, I, I didn't do the contacts.
Yes.
Then if we're okay, we're, we're fine then.
Well, I do see a fourth grade class might have thirty-five kids. Is that, am I reading that correctly? At Garfield?
Yeah, so, um, yes, that is true. Although I don't, John, do you have those independent study, by the way, on Garfield?
Hold on, what grade are we looking at?
Fourth grade. So I was talking to Lupe about this one, the thirty-five.
Yeah, there are, there are some Garf, I don't have the number, but Garfield is included.
So this one we're watching too, because she says there's instability, like people talked about moving. There was a few, I guess, a family. So she said, should we get back to you today on this one? So I don't, this one's a question mark in my mind. But if it is indeed thirty-five, then yes, that would be another example.
That'd be four, that would be four kids.
Four kids, because they're already, the other classes are thirty-one. And then another, yeah, and then that would be hiring another teacher if we're keeping those kids. Or, because if you look at their third grade.
Right, they're also high.
I mean, they're still within contract, but higher.
Right, right. So maybe there's an opportunity there to think about whether it's an instructional assistant or a teacher, if in fact, all those classes are filled.
Well, this one would be a problem if it's thirty-five. We would need four kids to go to another room, whether, in this case, not on site or another site.
Yeah, and they're fourth grade, so you'd have to, what, what we'd need, what we would need to do, if, if it is a thirty-five, just by eyeballing this, we would need to have another teacher and we create a combination of a three, four and make that three, four really small.
Right.
Yeah, so collectively with your three, four, you'd have a hundred and twenty-five students. It's in fact, all were really coming in there and all that, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, Garfield has quite a fluctuation in their first ten days. That's why we were watching, but, but I don't know, I don't know. It's, it's, we'll have to, that one's.
Yeah, well, maybe to stay at a high level, because we, you know, you guys can figure out the details of this. I think what we're hearing from the board is stability is important. You know, particularly around trying to move a kid out of a school. I think it's a little bit different if maybe you're moving from one teacher to another, but even that can cause some people trauma. So stability, you know, strive for the twenty-five, for the K through two. And then it's up to, what, thirty, thirty-one for the upper. And then where we might have those high numbers, which it sounds like Hoover is one we talked about, maybe Garfield. But if there's any others, we don't need to get into the weeds of what those are. Then it sounds like the board is open, if we have the money, to considering hiring another staff person, whether it's a teacher and instructional aide to help, right? Because, and particularly where there's an equity issue, right? I think that's what I was hearing from all of them, and I see heads nodding. Is there any other kind of higher level direction we want to give them as they think about staffing?
Well, and I think checking school of choice first.
Yes, oh, yes, of course. Yeah, that would be the ideal, is maybe some of them just want to move.
Yeah.
And we do have some low numbers at schools, you know, at least one of our schools of choice.
Right, right, right.
Good point. All right, do you have what you need? All right. Do you have what you need from us?
I, I really, uh, before we leave this topic or what have you, I just really wanted to show you Orion, just to put on your radar. This is not day ten. However. We're watching this closely, especially for example, this Kinder at fifteen, English only Orion program, the alternative, and eleven. This normally would be combined to be one class in a typical year. Okay? That Gordon and Kraft, um, two classes. And then as we continue on, we see down here twenty one in the English only alternative program. Twenty three. Twenty, twenty one. And then eighteen. Here in fourth grade. Fifteen, we would normally look at this closely as well. Um, nineteen and eighteen. So that's the alternative program. And then you can see also the Mandarin immersion, which I recognize has additional layers to it with testing and so forth, but. Uh, and we know these numbers are lower too. However, and we also have our independent study at the bottom here. Okay? So just something to keep on our radar as we look ahead. And this would be a great, in fact, at the principal meeting yesterday, Catherine was like, please send me your students, please, please. Because, you know, if, if families do have that wish, it'd be great to have it be granted in this case. All right, so that was it for enrollment. Those are all the documents I have for you.
Right, perfect. Any other questions, comments? I think we know what, how to move forward. And we got the information we needed from the board, so. Perfect.
Can I just, um, make a kind of common question? So with, um, Wendy just pointing out this Orion low number and enrollment. And then the need for a possible teacher at, say Hoover. Um, how do you guys, and obviously you guys know how to do this, but. Rather than say hire a new teacher, then do you guys perhaps make a decision on moving a teacher to another site? In this case?
We just, my, at the beginning, I said, my recommendation was not to do that. Was to leave schools like they were. Because of number one, you know, what we went through the last eighteen months. What we're, we're coming back now to in person. So I just did not want to. Change anything with the exception of where we had the additional enrollment numbers at certain grade levels at certain schools.
Okay. Thanks.
This is a one year only.
Just a comment on Orion. You know, this school has been in flux for a number of years. They had families that left, um, over the last two years, and I think. People have been, the community has been hesitant to enroll new kindergarten in. In Orion because of this, so. My hope is, as they stabilize and we recover from the pandemic. Um, and, you know, we're. Further out from the merge that happened, I think it, it should stabilize and we'll see it grow more. Is my hope.
I agree with you, Janet. I think that was well said. Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks, Wendy.
Sure. I guess I will leave you unless you would like me to, we'll be talking about Priscilla in a different venue.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Good day.
Right, you too, Wendy. Thanks. Drink some tea.
I know, I have to do that. Thanks, have a good weekend. Bye.
All right, perfect. Thank you. We, we know what to do. So, um, the next piece I wanted to go to was, and then we'll, we'll break for lunch. But was, uh, six point three has to do with school reports, those. School presentations that we were doing. Previously before COVID, and at that time, it was like every. Other year, a school would come before the board. So at yesterday's principal's meeting, uh, I discussed that we were going to go back. To doing school reports and that everyone this school year would be reporting. So, uh, each month there will be. For each board meeting, one school doing a report. So what Liz and I are going to do are definitely going to, I want them consistent. So you're not. Not everybody is trying to do, um, a dog and pony show. As sometimes it turns out to be, which is great, because I know they're, they're, they're very supportive of their school sites. They want to show you the best and what everything that's going on, the fun things that are going on. There'll be a one piece that's going to look at data and what they're doing. With that data to improve acad, students academically. And then there'll be another piece where they can talk about enrichment, they can talk about, um. Whatever they're doing to get students engaged with SEL, the different things that they're doing, because they're. They do a different venue at each school site. Uh, matter of fact, the conversation led to. Where I thought I was not very clear at our, one of our previous meetings, because many of them are starting to work with outside entities. In the arena of, uh, gardening, school gardens, also in the arena of, um. Different types of. Outside consultants that are coming, that would like to come into school sites in regarding to art. In regard, regard to filming, in regard to other creative. Items that they are funding either through Measure U, that PTA or PTO is funding. And, um. I got a little concerned because, you know, of the pandemic framework. And making sure that, you know, um. When you have these entities coming in. That they're following that framework quite well. The framework says to make sure that you try to limit outside people, but at the same time. You want to create. Uh, an environment, a school environment that is engaging. That has vigorous learning anticipation for kids. But as I told the principals, make sure that. We know that these people are vaccinated, so you're gonna have to only do that once. Um, and then make sure that they're filling out our wellness form before they come to you. Because one of the, um. Item, one of the entities that. A lot, several schools are using is this company. And I, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it, it's through Santa Clara. County. Um, that, that's where they're based. So they work with Santa Clara School, Santa Clara County Schools, and now they're moving into San Mateo County. So if a teacher comes and is doing some type of an art lesson. Uh, it doesn't mean that they're only working here in Redwood City or in, in the peninsula, but they're working at several different. District. Districts within. I'd say with, within the peninsula. But different school sites too. So I just want them to really hone in on that, because at first I was a bit concerned. Because of the variant, but they have to be masked, they have to make sure they're vaccinated. Of course, they, we, we do all the fingerprinting and all that business that we need to do with the Department of Justice. But, um. Those types of activities are things that they would also like to share with you. At the board presentation. So is there anything besides the, the academic piece? And looking at the data and their next steps? How they're. Looking at the data and how they are, um. From what they've reviewed in data and met with their staff and their school site councils, what they're doing to enhance the instruction in the classroom. That's one piece. And the other piece will be. The enrichment, the well, health and wellness piece, the social emotional learning piece. Is there anything that? Else that you would like to see in a board report? The board reports probably, and I told no more than, you know, about fifteen minutes that they, they can, and then it's questions and answers from, from the board members. Questions and comments.
So one of the comments for me would be, um, and I don't know if this is feasible, but. That some. School sites are doing something that works very well for the students. I mean, everybody is unique in their own way, right? But if we know that certain school sites are doing something that is really working for them. I'm just curious to know if other principals are actually taking note of that and trying to implement some of those. Items, activities, curriculum. Within their own school site. So that we can actually see that they are collaborating and we are seeing an improvement.
So that does happen, that, that does happen, Cecilia. So what are, are you asking? Then to. If they have a special program that they're utilizing. You would like to hear if it's being utilized somewhere else in the district? Is that what I hear you saying?
Correct.
And then I think this is what you were saying, but the, the SIPSA's are going to be aligned to the LCAP in terms of goals and metrics. And so the board report will be aligned to the SIPSA in terms of metrics and performance. Is, is that what we'll see? Okay.
And then there's that whole, like I say, the whole enrichment piece, SEL, that, that, that's. And it looks, that looks a little different from school to school, believe me.
And that's where they could add in if they wanted to have like a little student video or something like that, right? Yeah.
Or sometimes, remember, sometimes students do come and present with.
Present, yeah, I, I, cause I, I do think the student focus is nice, um, have something that's. Either a video of the students doing something or having a student come and talk about it or showcase it, right? And I do like the idea, John, of the whole thing being thirty minutes or less, so fifteen minutes is kind of presentation and fifteen minutes is conversation. Questions, right? Because we're gonna have a lot in our agendas and if we're seeing one of these, because we have had in the past, some of them have gone like an hour and fifteen minutes. Or an hour and a half, and we won't be able to do that if we're having one, a meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, great. I, I love the idea. I mean, we always like to hear from the school sites. And then we'll, we'll take off, you know, we've been doing those showcases, right? We'll take that off, this will replace that.
That'll replace that. This will replace that. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
John, are you thinking you're gonna give them, like each school, a template to follow?
Exactly. Yep, yep.
I think that'd be great to keep them consistent. So we know what to expect and, and definitely, um. The shorter end of. Fifteen minutes.
Exactly, exactly. Anything else that we're missing on this? All right, great. And we're, we're going to preview with them before it even gets on. Agenda, because if they have to cut, they're gonna cut. You know? Some of, you know, well, you know how they are, and they all try and outdo each other, Mike. So. They see, because they all watch when it, when, when they're present, when, when the principals are presenting, when, when it comes up. And then they, oh, how can I do something a little different, you know, and so. Yeah.
Ask them to put an attachment to it. So that we can read it before and be ready with questions if they really want to, but make that. Template that they follow.
Yeah.
Pretty much, you know.
That's why I think a template is a really.
Yeah, the template is.
You do get to the, how can I one up the next?
Yeah, that's. Good point. That's why the template is, is, is gonna be created. All right, perfect. All right, the next item, um, and we're moving right along, so that helps with the board reports. The in-person school board meetings. So on the thirtieth, which is of September, which is a Thursday, and it's after the governor's recall. And all that business that takes place on the fourteenth. That governor's, um. Executive order sunsets, not unless he does something different, but, uh, we don't believe that's going to take place. So what we have done at this point in time in the boardroom. Is we do have cameras that are on. The dais is. Right up front and there's a camera on each wall. And that camera, those cameras on each wall. Will allow us to stream our board meetings using Zoom. And as a board member. Or a staff member is talking, the camera starts to move. And one of our tech people will be there at each of the. Board meetings that we do have. With that being said. Some of our school districts in the county has started to go back to in-person. I believe Hillsborough is one. That has gone back to in-person. Bay Shore is another school district that has gone back to in-person. And. The question that I have for you is not really. Going back in person, but it has to do. With, um. Our community comments. There's. Hillsborough, I believe you have to be there in person to comment. Bay Shore, you have to be there in person to comment. Since we have been doing virtual meetings, we, as you are well aware, we get many community members, parents that. Come to the meetings so they can, uh, definitely understand. The direction and what we're talking about at each of our meetings and what's, action items are being, uh, taken. So what I want to hear from you. Going back in person is. How do you feel about, granted. I'm sure there's going to be still. In our boardroom, I think it's the capacity in our boardroom. Us included, I believe is seventy five. That's, and that's. Put in place by the fire marshal next door. And those of you who've been on the board recall. We don't want the fire marshal coming in. We've had that happen to us a couple of times and it's not. At the time, the one they had was a cranky old man. I remember that night if, uh, I'm sure Maria and. And, and, and Alyssa and Janet remember when we had the teacher that passed out in the. In the lobby and, oh my god.
I was on the board at that time.
No, maybe you weren't, maybe, okay, then it was just, it was just Mar, uh, Maria and Janet. And.
I think he retired, so.
Yeah, the other one, she is nice, but she is. Very strict. I mean, even with our parking out here, um, you know, with the red lines, do not park in the red lines. So with all that being said, we can only have seventy five and we'll probably still space. Space the, um. The chairs a bit, because remember we also have, we had them very, very close. And we'll, we'll most likely. I don't know if the mask restriction will be lifted or not, we'll still have masks, but we'll, we'll have new mics, we will have new mics. Because the old mics are back from the Allerton days and, and so, uh, it'll be better so when you talk. Not only can those that are in the audience hear you, but those who are listening vis a vis. Uh, internet will be able to hear you. My question to you is. In regard to. Comments from the public. How would you like to handle that? You know, right now, everybody signs up. There's a three minutes, plus there's the board policy. If we have X amount of people that want to speak. Then, you know, the, the minutes, you know, are, are lessened. But. I want to hear from you. I kind of have what, what I would like, but I want to hear from you. How would you like to handle the public comments? Knowing that. And like I say, there have not been a lot of districts that I've gone back to in person, but knowing the one, the, the two that I really know of and talking to those superintendents. How they went about. Having public comments where you have to be in person.
I would say I don't mind getting public comments via, uh, Zoom or the, what do we call it, the Google Doc. I would just say if we're gonna go back in person, um, I would probably do priority to the people that are in the boardroom. And then. Put everybody else second. Um, that would be my, my opinion, because again, if we're gonna stream it and people are gonna be able. Hear us talking, why not have them be part of that conversation?
Yeah, and I, I would, I, I think so too. I'd like the idea of allowing remote con, comment. Um, I think of the concern is that it'll become overwhelming. We should look back to the policy that says we can limit the amount of time for comment, um, both per comment and. Total time. Um, and then I think about priority order, like making that decision on priority, um, how that's gonna work. Which in person and then followed by the remote ones makes a lot of sense to me.
All right.
I agree. If there's too many, then we. Lower the amount, but I like the idea, especially. Seeing, uh, some of the cafecitos online with the parents during the pandemic, the Spanish speaking parents that don't have transportation. So I'm hoping that they will, uh, participate. Uh, I think as to how we handle it. Uh I think as to how we handle it, um it is, I mean, Janet's a pro at this and she could probably give us all lessons and Lisa now. Uh but I've seen in other places where the uh clerk or the secretaries and the technical people really do take a much more active role so that the person running the meeting is just running the meeting and not looking for comments. The, the way it works is more like, uh let's say Eliana, who's here now. Say, Eliana, do we have any comments? And then they take it over from there and say, you know, they prioritize who was first, because they may not be in front of us. Uh um so that's what I'm thinking of.
I agree with everything that's been said. Um I don't mind taking them by Zoom, but I would prefer to have, you know, the speakers in person um and prioritizing that. Um and then I don't know, John, if you guys have already done this, but I would recommend doing a, like a mock board meeting to see how the cameras are working.
We are gonna do that.
Watch it from the streaming side.
Right.
Audience to make sure, because there's gonna be some, some hiccups.
There're gonna be some hiccups, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I agree with uh what the board members have said and Maria, I was thinking the same thing. I think logistically for the president who's sitting, you know, I think Janet and I have been able to do it and, and it is extra work on Zoom with the, you know, we've been sort of taking that technical lead. I think when we're back in the boardroom, I prefer the president to be able to focus on the in-person, whatever's happening. And then they will need assistance from a staff member where it's, whether it's Eliana or Kyle or somebody who will be looking at, here's the comments coming in. And then they can, like you said, Maria, just, you know, let the president know, okay, there's five comments that want to come in on this one, and then we'll know the board policy, like they get the, you know, the three minutes. And then the name, you know, it's kind of the names and bringing them up is up to staff and then the board can, president can just follow them. But yeah. I, I like that idea. I think we talked about wanting to be inclusive and equitable in our um ability for people to to participate, right, in our meetings. So, and maybe what we could do um is say, okay, if we start in October, you know, maybe in January or February, we check in and see how it's going, and then we can decide, do we continue with this? Or do something else, right? So maybe have a check-in at some point.
Yeah, the other, oh, sorry Janet, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh the other thing I was thinking about was the chat. Up to now, we've been answering the questions and I think once we go back, um my preference would be that um again, a staff member or somebody picks up those questions and gets back to um the uh person asking the questions instead of going back and forth, because again, that takes a lot more distraction. And if we want to give preference and listen to the people who made the effort to come in person as well, um that's just my-
So I might suggest even closing the chat, because nobody, we won't be there monitoring it, so um I, I don't think there's a reason for them to direct questions to us that way. I think if they want to, you know, do, do a public speaker's card or send us an email if they have a question, but if we're not sitting here monitoring it as board members, there's probably no reason to have it on. Um and then the other thing I was gonna say, oh, did, Eliana, did you want to say something? You had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I can wait till you're done.
Okay, uh the other thing, I don't know if you've thought about this, is um what to do about speakers cards? Are you planning on taking them all on Google Docs, even if they're in person? Or are you only gonna take the, the card like we used to do? If they're in person, and if that's the case, making sure that's clear on the Google Doc that you're filling this out to speak virtually. If you're in person, you need to go fill out that card.
Good point, yeah, I hadn't thought about that, okay.
So um here's a feature on Board Jocks where I get to make the side of Board Jocks live. And I can take the voting. Um I can also physically move agenda items whenever there's a motion to move certain agenda items. So my concern with, I, I know when we were doing in-person meetings, sometimes I would get, you know, a couple of people within the first fifteen, twenty minutes, sometimes even half hour at the meeting. And sometimes, you know, the, the perfect thing about recording the meetings is that I can always go back and follow up. But you know, sometimes I'd get distracted and they would ask me certain things and I wouldn't hear motions or I didn't hear the voting. So if we could be very specific as to what timeframe we will be accepting speakers cards, um I don't have, I know before I used to collect the speakers cards, but sometimes I would get specific questions within the live portion of the meeting. And that's also, um that's also going to be a little bit too much for me, controlling the live portion of Board Jocks, taking speakers cards and addressing those speakers cards directly to the board president.
So what you're saying is that we would need to have someone else that could um?
Not necessarily. I, I, I think that if we um ask the public to submit their, their speakers cards um at a certain time, and then we stop collecting speakers cards at a certain time. Um and I know sometimes, you know, action items come up, consent items, someone comes into the board meeting late and they realize, oh, I actually have a comment, or somebody else makes a comment and says, oh, I didn't think about that. Let me fill out a speaker's card and turn it in. And oftentimes, that's what happens, right? And they'll come up and say, hey, is it okay? So I don't get to hear what's happening during the rest of the meeting when that happens.
So a time period when you, you have from A to B, this is when you turn in your speaker card if you want to speak to the board, and then um that would ele- eliminate the, the disruption that would sometimes occur. Is that what I hear you saying, Ellie?
Yes. Because sometimes also Wendy sits to my left, and sometimes the speakers cards go to Wendy.
Go to Wendy, right.
To me, and then we're trying to figure out what agenda item it is, so I can label them also correctly to give them, to give them to President McAvoy. So um we, we know exactly how to address the person that wants to speak to the school board.
Okay.
Right, and what I was suggesting was that instead of having to worry about passing it on to uh the president, you keep track of all those things, so it's easier for everybody. You don't have to pass them on. And all President McAvoy would say is turn to Eliana and say, do we have any speakers for this item? And then you can call them out there from there, so it's less work than having to pass those things back and forth. You would control it all. And if there are people who come in late, I guess one option would be to say uh before the consent items or something, take a pause and say, did anybody come in late and would like to speak? Now is the time, bring him forward after that. Or something like that, because there's always somebody that comes in late.
Right, and that would be perfect. Um maybe the first five, um the last five minutes before the board meeting starts, I can label all my speakers cards. Um if something was unclear on the speaker's card, I can go to the person, fix it on my end, and then once the meeting starts, I, I can certainly call on the person that wants to speak to the school board. So that will definitely work on my end.
Okay, so then what I hear is priority would be for first priority or the speaker cards would be for those people that are in person, right? And then the second would be for those people that are virtual. And then depending on, then the, oh, these turn lights, I'm not moving around. And then the second would be for those people that are, want to make a comment that are, that are viewing the board meeting virtually. And they would do theirs also within a time period, from what I hear Eliana saying. And dependent on the number of speaker cards that we have personally and virtually would determine the amount of minutes they would each get according to the board policy. Right?
John, you said you had a preference. Do you want to tell us what that is?
My preference was to definitely do priority with those people that were in the board meeting, that were, that were there personally, to start with them, like you, and then go to the virtual. That, that was my preference. But I just wanted to hear from you and you all came up with the same thing.
And you know, one option might be um John, you and Eliana can think about this, is you know, right now, if a member of the public goes to the board agenda, you know, ahead of the meeting, they can sign up for the Google Doc that they want to speak virtually, and then we actually go in order of that. So if they sign up two days ahead of time, they're first on the list, and then the one day, we could actually just include, you know, allow in-person and virtual people to use that form and then just check if you're gonna be in person.
That's true.
And that would help, that would help Olivia, some of the speakers cards. Then we could have the speakers cards for those people who show up in person that haven't done that. That might legitimately just eliminate a few of those questions. I don't know, you guys can think about if that's helpful. But it also would help prioritize those who show up in person that will have a sense of who's coming and speaking and I, I kind of like that ahead of the meeting, those that do sign up ahead of time, it gives me a sense of who's speaking on what, and there's a little more time to think about how much, how many minutes they have and um it hasn't been as much of an issue the last couple months, but it was a lot of issue when, you know, you've got twenty people who want to speak and-
Right, and so what we'll do is definitely um definitely put this information out to the public before we start. We'll put it out several times, so they'll have this. And um then if we get any comments back from them, you know, why are we doing that? We can always, I can always address it. But I think one of the key points is definitely having everything delineated, get it out to the public in plenty of time, several times, so they really understand that yes, we're going back to in-person, but it's gonna be a little different because we're also doing it virtually. So that, so that everybody has a true understanding.
And then I sorry, um I also agree with Janet that we probably should turn off the chat since we're gonna be in person. Um I think, again, those that want to speak will speak during public comments. Um and the chat, again, it's a little bit more disturbing. I know that Janet keeps up with all the comments and makes sure that everybody um you know, that we, we do hear everybody, Ben, if they want to speak, they should do so during public comments.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and they can always send us an email, you know, some of them do that, and that's less distracting, so we can actually get through the business of the meeting, yeah, good.
All right, all right, got it. I've got it, perfect. And then Eliana, I will sit down and, and really um smooth out this public comment piece, comment piece, all right? So it is twelve oh six, so what if we take thirty minutes for lunch? How's that? Cause I have um several items that I, I, I believe the closed session items, uh seven point one will go through quickly, and the other items will go through pretty fast too, so we can be out by around two o'clock. All right?
I will send the closed session link um a few minutes ago.
Who did?
I resent the closed session. So you should probably pass on your email.
So, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Leslie, thank you for joining our open session. We really appreciate having you in the audience.
I was gonna say that too. Thanks, Leslie. Good to see you. Sort of see you, I saw your name.
Hi, Leslie.
All right, so then we'll be coming back on the other link at twelve thirty-seven.
Yep.
Is that, are you wanting to say twelve thirty-five?
Ah, twelve thirty-five is perfect, twelve thirty-five is perfect.
Okay.
See you.
Okay, see the rest of you at twelve thirty-five.